Thank you, probably, and to those of you that are trying to get here this evening, it's just to let people come in. I know that I figured we might already agenda this evening. If I may, I'd like to look.
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Welcome, Richard, I forgot. We have the speaker right at your seat.
I'm here.
Thank you, sir.
And may I point a clarification? You were moving to approve the agenda on the consent calendar.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't see the agenda on the consent calendar. Apologize. All right, I move to adopt, let me revise this, I move to adopt the consent calendar as written, including the following items. Item one, the adoption of the regular meeting agenda. Two, the approval of the board minutes, July 31st, 2014, regular meeting. Three, the legal committee reports. Four, the committee appointments. And five, the election committee amendments to election and referenda resolutions, one, three, and four. Do I hear a second? Eve, would you?
Second.
Again, any comments or questions? Yes?
Comment, we did note in the resolution regarding board governance, we had said we would delay until our meeting of this month, so we'll have to address that later in the course of the meeting.
Thank you. Let me ask a question, all those in favor of the consent calendar, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item, the CEO management report.
I'm gonna try and make this as brief as I can because the report is online, it will be going out in RA news tomorrow, as well as available on our website. But I wanted to highlight some things in particular for the audience and for our Board of Directors. One, I'm sorry, deputy, he's been with you, did want to announce that tonight as we found out of this evening. One of the coolest things that happened last week is that we won the Healthiest Employer Award with the Washington Business Journal. We came in third place for our size of an organization, and this is really important for the Reston Association because having a great, healthy program, teaching staff to take care of themselves, eating wise, getting good sleep, stress management, and providing different programs for them, for training, helps us keep what that type of program has done for our budget coming up in 2015. But it's significant, and I'm very proud of our staff who put such a fabulous program together. Our Covenant's team has been in training most of this week. Our trade organization, Community Associations Institute, came in to teach something called the M-100 course, that's called the Essentials of Community Management. And the team learned about the importance of a variety of different topics so that they can take it back out into the community. And that was the roles and responsibilities of managers, owners, committees to the board, management ethics, developing, implementing, and enforcing rules, organizing and conducting board meetings, preparing budgets and funding reserves, assessment collections, policies and procedures, collecting delinquency payments, financial statements, reporting methods and operations, evaluating risk management, implementing maintenance programs, preparing bid requests, recruiting, selecting, and managing personnel, and managing sustainable and developing communities. This is also significant because we are out in the community, working with our clusters and other homeowners, and we want to make sure they're as knowledgeable as possible to help them through a wide variety of different questions that we get asked by different boards. The senior leadership team each have a set of goals for 12 and 36 months, and there are about five different components of the senior leadership team. One is Covenant's administration, we have communications and community engagement, HR admin, finance and IT, Parks Recreation and Community Resources. Included in the CEO report is the listing of the goals for the Covenant's administration. You'll be able to see a different listing of goals each month until we hit month five, and it'll give you a flavor of what my expectations are of our senior leadership team internally and what you can see us doing in the community for you and on your behalf. We are getting ready next week to do an internal strategic development plan for recreation services. That team is very anxious to get a jump on planning for the 2016-17 budget, so they're going to be talking internally about what they think is important for rec services coming forward, so you'll see more of that in the next couple of months. Two meetings have been held on the Pony Barn Recreation Area with the members of that community. I'm very excited about this because it's the first time we've put in place a process where we want to get community input and actually have the community develop an enhancement plan for that park. There's a lot more work to be done, and a lot that will be coming your way, probably, hopefully, by the end of this year, if not early next year, that working group with Pony Barn will be coming to the Board of Directors with a plan for what they'd like to see. So it's important to get community involved in these type of activities. On October the 11th, we have a Home and Garden Expo that's going to be held here at Reston Association, that's on a Saturday. We have a wide variety of different things that we're going to make available for members, from external property maintenance to internal property maintenance as well, things that you want to do for home renovations. So we have a wide variety of speakers coming, but our event sponsors thus far include the Care of Trees, HB Services, Synergy Design and Construction, Brothers Paving and Concrete, and American Disposal Services. Stop by for a free event that we're putting on for the community to learn more about what you can do. Most important thing is our Covenant staff is going to be here to help answer questions about exterior maintenance of property. That is what's in the CEO report this month, you can also find the financials for the month ending August in the back of the report as well.
Thank you, Kate, well done.
I'm sorry, I've got one more thing.
Yes, I was gonna bring it up.
I apologize. I'm gonna let you bring it up?
No, go for it.
All right. One of the things that we're holding next month, and I want to give big credit to Larry Butler, our Senior Director of Parks Recreation and Community Resources, and there's some extra of these on the table outside. On October the 29th, we're going to be holding a Healthy Community Design Workshop that's featuring Mark Fenton, who is the host of a PBS series called America's Walking. And he is an advocate for healthy design for communities. We're very committed to making sure we've got multimodal transportation facilities in the community as the community develops in the redevelopment process. So this is a way to learn what can be done, he's going to do an analysis of our community and give us the results of it. He'll be meeting with developers early in the day to give them some hints on some things that we can do around the community as they look at building.
Thank you, well done, appreciate that. Any comments for Kate? All right. The next item is the Reston Master Plan, Phase Two Comprehensive Plan Amendments. Mr. McBride? Is he here yet, or is he stuck in traffic?
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, we'll catch up with him when he's able to get here. The next item is member and board comments, and I know there are a lot of people here, so for those of you that are here and have signed up to speak, I would ask that if you're representing yourself as a member of Reston, please give yourself three minutes, we'll be marking the time. I do have many comments here that were provided because today is a holiday that I will read into the record as well, and so I'll begin with reading the comments from those who are unable to attend, and then I will call those that have signed up. And as I said, there are many here, I want to give everybody their time, especially the last person on the list, so please be cognizant of that as you're presenting and speaking. First of all, let me read the first item. This is from Mr. Jerry Valloy. Dear members of the Reston Association Board of Directors, I want to thank Ken, Ellen, and Kate for responding to the concerns of not only South Bay Cluster members, but also the concerns of the many other families who have used the Cabots Point Ball Field, Play Meadow, and Tot Lot for many years for recreational purposes, and which Ball Field Play Meadow is not proposed for construction of bocce ball courts. While unable to make this meeting on September, well, actually, has the date incorrect, I understand that the use of the Ball Field Play Meadow area where families have played varying sports, picnicked, and pursued other activities for many years was loaded with children using the area for those types of purposes during your visit. I can assure you that none of that was staged for your benefit, and those of us who live in the Cabots Point-South Bay Cluster see that kind of usage so very frequently during much of the year. I'm sure that you realize the failures of the notifications process that you might concede those failures. The likely notification response failures aside, however, my major point and contention is that this is inconceivable to me that RA's analysis of where to locate the bocce ball courts within Reston convinced the board that this small park where the Ball Field Play Meadow is used so much for so many enjoyable purposes, where parking is limited and often taken up by bus riders, where the location of the bocce ball courts would be within feet of member homes was the appropriate or best sighting within RA's or the county's recreation areas for the proposed bocce ball courts. I would hope that the selection of the Cabots Point Ball Field Play Meadow area was not driven by an individual's personal preference but by good RA analysis that characterized Reston Association's usual processes. I cannot tell you how strongly enough how impressed I have been with this cluster's honest assessment and the manner in which they have brought forward their concerns. They raise these concerns not from a "not in my backyard" attitude, but from a true conviction that citing the bocce ball courts here is just wrong, was not well-founded and would take away so much of a well-used recreation area for so many families that have enjoyed it for many years. I join them in that conviction. Thank you for yours, as always, excellent responsiveness and your consideration. I'll ask that in whatever form to include that on September 25th, my comments be included with the official public record. Signed, Jerry Valloy. Next item is Mr. Casio, is he in the audience by chance?
Yes.
All right, have you signed up?
I have, because I didn't know if I was gonna.
Okay, so if I may, I'll go and allow you to present this in person?
That is, thanks.
Okay, thank you. The next person is Chuck Fay.
Actually, that's my wife, Fay.
Oh, okay.
She's not here.
I'll read that for her then, all right. Let's see, please note, I am unable to present this myself because the board meeting is being held on the Jewish holiday, Rosh Hashanah. Part of the unique environment Reston offers is green, open space. In these spaces, Reston residents can enjoy the simple freedom to meet informally, play with their children or grandchildren, and engage one another in impromptu, unstructured activities. The small, open area that the intersection of South Lakes Drive and Cabots Point Lane, known as Cabots Point Park, is one such place. Disrupting the tiny park's natural appeal in order to install bocce ball courts that will occupy much of the natural open space would be a major violation of what Reston is about. Cabots Point Park currently represents the epitome of the community. Small parks like it are among the major appeals for people who decide to live in Reston. They deserve the protection of Reston Association and the board, not disruption by the Association and the board. There are precious few areas where, anywhere these days, where parents and children can run and play in an unstructured environment, especially in clusters like South Bay and Cabots Point, where personal yard space is limited. My own grandchildren love playing on the swings and slides when they were toddlers, and now they are near double-digit age, they throw the football or hit wiffle ball in the open field, I remember wiffle ball. Unstructured, uncluttered, unregulated, that's what Cabots Point Park is, and that is what it deserves to remain. It's not the appropriate area for a project that would tear up the current natural environment, introduce increased traffic into an area that cannot accommodate it, and compromise the friendly, community-oriented area that currently exists. If RA and the board must construct a bocce ball facility in Reston, find another less intrusive area to do so, leave Cabots Point Park as it is. Thank you. Submitted by Fay Casio. Next item, this is from Linda Bartlett, President of the Cedar Cove Cluster. On June 25th, I received a phone call from the President of South Bay Cluster asking if we had received a registered letter from Reston Association regarding the bocce court that was to be built in Cabots Point Park. I stated that we had not received the letter, and the only knowledge we had of a bocce ball court was when Richard Chu mentioned it at our spring cluster meeting. During member comments, he made a statement that Reston Association was installing a bocce court, but gave no specific details. We did not receive a registered letter, we were informed that the letter was returned to Reston Association unclaimed. After receiving a letter that the bocce court had been approved, I called Margot Collins at Reston Association, and I was told that we could not do anything because we were not listed as an affected party, although the letter of approval dated on June 17th, 2014, listed Cedar Cove Cluster as an affected party. Margot stated that this was a clerical error. She stated that the only person who could change anything regarding the application was the RA staff member who submitted the DRB application. For these reasons, we believe the correct process was not followed for submitting DR applications. Linda Bartlett, President, Cedar Cove Cluster. The next is from, this would be both Thomas and Jamie Scotties, Skates? Hello, darling, Parker gave me your email address since I was unable to attend the meeting this evening, please confirm that you received the email, all my best. Jamie, statement opposing bocce ball court, greetings. I first learned of the bocce ball. By the way, all of these should be interwoven into your packets if you haven't seen them, so these should be available to you, I'm hoping. I first learned of the bocce ball courts by seeing a sign posted on a bench at the park, I immediately had a number of questions, starting with the process or lack of processes that took place leading up to that point. I am concerned that decisions are being made that impact the neighborhood without consulting or informing those who will most notice or be affected by the change. Excuse me. My daughter and many of her friends visit this park regularly after their school day concludes at 12:45 in the afternoon. My daughter attends Sunset Hills Montessori School, and this park is perfect for the two to six-year-old crowd. My concern stems from the size of the bocce ball courts and how it will affect the environment. Currently, children play tee ball, soccer, frisbee tag, and other activities in the grassy area. That will now be gone. This is a small park, and the bocce ball courts will dominate most of the area. In addition, I am concerned about the Reston Association's spending in general. I am not against bocce ball, not at all, however, there are much better ways to spend the money. We currently have a number of abandoned or neglected homes in Reston, Reston Association's doing nothing about it, and all of our property values are being affected. Forcing owners, banks, and the county to address these concerns would be an excellent use of time and money. That being said, if Reston Association is looking to spend or invest in projects, why not implement a conservation project to find a way for Reston to stand out as a community? One of the main complaints I hear about Reston is the insect problem. Bats are going to be on the endangered species list in a matter of a few years, bats eat up to 1,000 insects per hour. Why positively impact the bats, our ecosystem, and the Reston community as a whole? Finally, why doesn't Reston become a safe haven for bats and put up bat houses to attract them? Finally, if a decision can't be reached on what projects should be done, why not save the money and decrease the annual dues during these tough economic times? The point being, there are many avenues that are much more compelling than bocce ball courts. Thank you for your consideration, Thomas and Jamie Skates. This is Claire C., say? Reston Association, Board of Directors, I am the owner and resident of 2102 South Bay Lane, Reston, Virginia, and firmly oppose, in all caps, the possible construction of bocce courts at Cabots Point-South Lakes Drive, South Bay Lane, because I am an affected party and was not notified as such when the original suggestion was submitted. I oppose the bocce court construction for the following reasons. As an affected party who lives adjacent to the subject green space, my personal home has reasons are: I was not approached as an affected party to date; the proposed court would have non-South Bay Lane residents parking our cluster's private guest parking, and also possibly block access to my home and driveway, plus for my neighbor, Mrs. Nancy Nolan. My South Bay Cluster Association would need to post private parking signs in the guest parking, and I am sure RA would not help us police its usage by non-residents. There would be a visual hindrance of the green space, which is the reason I selected to move to this home in 2004. There is a possibility of bocce balls rolling into my driveway, with children possibly getting hurt on RA property adjacent to my home property. Liability: Should someone get injured by bocce play, who would be responsible in notifying 911 and appropriate parties? Lights: If lights are installed on the bocce courts, they would negatively impact my home as the light would shine into my rooms. This is one of the few green spaces left in Reston where dog walkers gather in the early morning, children play in the Tot Lot, yoga classes are held, kids practice baseball carefully, and astronomy classes are held. Please read this in tonight's meeting, I am en route to Seattle and so unable to attend. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Claire C. All right, that's it for reading the comments from those who were unable to attend. Allow me now to go to those that have signed up. And again, let me remind you that we're going to do our best, especially for the poor person at the end, to limit this to three minutes if you can, please. First person is Mr. David Prelowitz.
Sir.
If you state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Dr. David Prelowitz, I live at Cedar Cove Court, adjacent to the Cabots Point Recreation Area. So I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak today.
Sir, can I get the full address just for the record?
It's 2224 Cedar Cove Court.
Thank you.
Sorry, sir.
Please.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the board for allowing me to speak today, and getting right to the point, given my time is limited. In regards to the proposed bocce court at Cabots Point Recreation Area, I'd like to log my opposition to its implementation for the following reasons. A) Character: It is out of character with respect to the main function of this area, which is to provide open recreation area for the enjoyment of the broader Reston public. Open recreation areas are rare in our area. Hence, Cabots Point's recreation area is a valued community resource for the families, and particularly children, to run and play, that offers both safety and space for recreational play, options such as lacrosse, capture the flag, frisbee tag, soccer, et cetera. A large bocce court with suggested plans to install a second court would take much of this openness area away from, for essentially a fringe sport. B) The adult influences: If such a court is installed, there's a real possibility that the facility could draw in less than desired adult community elements. Given that bocce is essentially an adult sport, less than desired behaviors may include routiness, drinking, smoking, bad language, litter, and possibly more crime that would rob the area of both its safety factor and its service to the broader Reston community, particular families with young children who like to enjoy the Tot Lot that would be right next to the proposed court. C) Available resource limitations: I have observed that the recreation area is utilized mostly by local walk-ins and small numbers of drive-in families who use the Tot Lot. There is limited parking available, typically just enough for those families for visiting the Tot Lot. The addition of a bocce court, and possibly two, will likely draw in larger populations that could significantly strain traffic conditions and available parking and garbage control resources. D) Monetary, aesthetic, and functional costs: Building a bocce court is not a simple task and will likely be expensive, given that it will be a public resource. A proper bocce court needs five main things: to be level, to have good drainage, to have a good play surface due to a border construction greater than six inches, and to have ongoing maintenance that includes ongoing watering, brushing, and surface repair. Not having all these will likely lead to an unused eyesore on a once thriving recreation area that is less aesthetic and recreationally functional. My research indicates that it could potentially cost up to $50,000 or more, particularly when Fairfax County 2011 public facilities, manual requirements, excavation of facilities for the disabled are included. Additionally, a water source should be provided at additional costs for effective bocce court utilization. Given the costs, I would suggest that Reston expand their funds elsewhere that would offer more value to the Reston public. And lastly, E) Safety issues: The proposed bocce construction is not in an area that is level. It's actually a shallow, sloping hill with a grade of around 3% to 5%. With excavation, the proposed 60-foot court would cut the grade of running children, as outlined in the playground employed at additional cost. And I would thank the board for allowing me to speak today. Well, you could think about doing other things. A bocce court is a highly engineered surface that requires, you know, like I said, exact lavaline and stuff of that nature. You could potentially put in a sand court for volleyball or something else, that would be less costly and potentially have a higher public value for a larger percentage of the public. Right now, I don't believe bocce is adequate.
Tonight's discussion is not to discuss the future, we have many members to get through, so I appreciate the comment, but if that's your only question, can we just hold that to the end? That would be helpful, for the sake of everybody else that has to get through the comments period here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, the next, we have 17 to go. Robin Parker.
I'm Chuck Casio, Robin has agreed to swap places. I have a Rosh Hashanah service to go to.
All right, please.
It's Chuck Casio, I live at 2134 South Bay Lane. I purchased my first home in Reston in 1971 after watching from Vienna as the community developed while I was in high school. I always knew this was where I wanted to live. I taught at South Lakes High School from the year it opened, 1978 until 1996. My wife taught there from 1979 to 1996. Over the years, we have both said that as long as we remain in Virginia, Reston is the only place we will live. Our four children, all now grown and living in different parts of the country, love to come home to Reston for visits with us, their friends, and the many memories they've formed here. I have a deep appreciation for Reston and for the role of the Reston Association and the board have played in making Reston the community it is today. The RA and the board have a vital job to do, and I have no doubt that the work is challenging, and most of the decisions you make provoke deep thought. It is with this respect in mind, and with my own commitment to this community, that I must state my strong objection to the proposed construction of bocce ball courts at Cabots Point Park. I object for many reasons, including the fact that appropriate processes were blatantly ignored by at least one board member, to the point where, without anyone else's knowledge or approval, actual markings were established on the small parkland outlining where the construction would take place. The markings not only outline most of the free space in the small park, but also cut through the natural greenery that is an integral part of Reston's appeal. Fortunately, my wife and I spotted the markings before the actual construction began, and the process was halted, but that is not the way Reston is meant to work. Beyond those appallingly self-centered violations of trust, here are some other significant reasons for my objection. One, as a resident of South Bay Cluster for the past 12 years, I have seen the recreational space at the park used for wonderfully diverse activities, diversity that reflects the very core of Reston. There are informal birthday parties for kids in that space, and fitness instructors sometimes hold their classes there on lovely Reston mornings. These informal gatherings, including the appeal of that area to little children who use the slides or just run around the open field with their friends or parents, will be denied the space that they have found so appealing. To replace these informal, community-based gatherings with a formal structure that would obliterate the space is a gross violation of community values. Number two, the communities adjacent to the park, including South Bay Cluster, are valued in part because of their privacy and their environment. The streets are quiet and very narrow, and the idea that strangers, some of whom most certainly not be from Reston, will come into the community, park on the narrow streets, and turn these quiet clusters into an event site is upsetting for many obvious reasons, including the negative impact on traffic, property values, and privacy. And three, Reston is usually, and you folks are usually so very protective of its space, the greenery, and the nature in general, but this plan goes directly against those values. It sends the wrong signal to others in Reston, as well as to people thinking and hoping to someday make Reston their home. Tearing up this tiny park would go directly against Reston's long-term values and be a great disservice to the residents who live in these clusters. There may be a space for bocce elsewhere in Reston, but this is not the space for it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, Ellen Goldman.
Good evening, my name is Ellen Goldman, I've lived in Reston for 30 years, and I currently live at 2148 South Bay Lane.
Thank you.
I am a professor at George Washington University and a consultant in leadership development and organizational strategy. I appreciate the opportunity to speak with the RA board. I am asking that the development of a bocce court or courts in Cabots Point Park be stopped. The park runs along South Bay Lane, down which all South Bay Cluster residents must travel to get to their homes. The development of a bocce court is inconsistent with four of Reston Association's 2011 vision system. Environmental sustainability will be upset by ripping a small park to shreds to install large structures in the ground. Qualified sources, including the World Bocce League, and this is in your materials, say that bocce can be played on any flat surface, so court construction is both unnecessary and environmentally inappropriate. Number two, violating Planning Principle Number Four, third bullet: The existing residential character of South Bay Cluster will be forfeited if every household has to enter South Bay Lane along parkland ripped to shreds. Violation of Planning Principle Number Nine: The range of recreational opportunities will be reduced. On the space the court will occupy, local residents now The court reduces these opportunities. Planning Principle number three is violated in that there is a lack of any planned infrastructure, and this will impede emergency vehicle access and create public health issues. Just two bocce teams could use all of the public parking spaces available, leaving none for other park users. South Bay Lane, which is the closest road to the park, is narrow, and parking on it is a violation of the fire code. There is one small trash receptacle in the park and no restroom facilities. Further details are provided in the material that I have just given you. In closing, I ask the board to consider number three of Robert Simon's Seven Goals, which states that the importance and dignity of each individual be the focal point for all planning and take precedence for large-scale concepts. What has taken precedence here is the bocce court. For the individuals living in South Bay Cluster, recreational opportunities are decreased, public health and emergency access issues are increased, the environment is upset, and the residential character is compromised. This project is too big and very unnecessary for our small park. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bill Parker.
Mr. Parker has a short slide presentation he wants to show.
Very good.
It's about 80 or 90 charts and graphs.
Excellent.
It shouldn't take too long.
I'm here all night.
It's our favorite. Do you have a slide advanced, or?
Got it. Thank you. I'm Bill Parker. I'm the president of the South Bay Cluster. I've lived in Reston for 10 years, and I was here at your last meeting. In June of 2013, in the Reston Association budget suggestions, Mr. Chu suggested that a bocce court be built. He was one of two people to suggest this in this document. In November, he met with the Cabot's Point Cluster and tried to get them on board to support, as they did, a bocce court in the park. He did say that he was concerned that it would prove to be too popular, and my eyes aren't good enough to read that. Then in December, Mr. Chu proposed and had passed the construction of a bocce court located at Cabot's Point. I don't know why Cabot's Point was selected. I don't think any research went into choosing Cabot's Point as the location. Then in May, the design review application form was sent to the DRB, asking for construction of a 12-by-60 bocce court. In that packet is the description of the court and the instruction that the DRB procedures require RA to notify contiguous property owners and to obtain their signatures on certified mail receipts. In the packet is the depiction of the court, the 12-by-60 court, and the four-foot crushed stone path. At the bottom of that document, it is the responsibility of the applicant to provide copies of updated plans to any registered affected parties prior to DRB approval. So in the packet are the labels for the mailings that went to Cabot's Point, South Bay, Cedar Cove, and Richard Chu. I tracked the numbers on these labels, and I found that all of them were undelivered and all of them returned to Reston Association. I don't know why. I didn't mail them out. I've asked repeatedly, what has happened to these mailings? When they come back into the association? Who does anything with them? Do they go in the trash? Do they go on a file? Where do they go? But I don't get any response to that. So since we didn't get any notification about what was going to the DRB, we did get a flyer, "Bocce Comes to Reston." In the flyer, it says, "No lights, no noise, no traffic. Parking is readily available." It's a promotional flyer for the court. It's not an official document. We finally learned of this plan when we got a letter from Reston saying that the DRB has approved the construction of a court. And much like Ms. Bartlett's experience, I talked to Margot Collins in Covenants, and she said that you're not an affected party, and the fact that you are listed as an affected party is a clerical error. And she said, "Besides, we mailed out the other packet. Go ahead and check the tracking numbers." So I did. So I came to you July 31st to talk about this, and Mr. Chu had the item removed from the agenda that was going to address the concerns of these folks. On August 15th, the association came and marked the field. We went and measured the markings of the field, and unlike the original markings shown at 12-by-60 bocce court, it shows an 80-by-55-foot space, 4,400 square feet, almost half the park. That is not in the original application that went to the DRB. So my objection is that the procedures weren't followed for notification. The refusal to accept an appeal was improper. The listing of art clusters as affected parties and subsequent revocation of affected party status was misleading and incorrect. Mr. Chu's role in the inception and execution of building this project and subsequent actions to override any dissent or discussion should preclude his participation in any board actions or discussions of this item, and he should recuse himself from the same. Thank you.
Wait. This time I just add one. Please, let's allow the rest of the members to have their comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next is Darlene.
... Cluster for 11 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed bocce court at the Cabot's Point Park. I believe that because proper notification and due process did not occur, the process needs to be reset so that proper procedures can be followed. Skipping ahead now as to whether the Cabot's Point Park is the appropriate place for a bocce court, I submit that it is not. The original dimensions proposed were 60 by 12. That is the size of one court. It was mentioned in the November 2013 Cabot's Point Cluster Board Meeting minutes, which we did not see until June 2014, because that's when we were first notified. In those minutes, it was mentioned that if the court was successful, a second court would be added. Mr. Chu even stated at that meeting that the biggest problem may be if the site is overly popular, and that one or two more benches and possibly a picnic table would be added. Is this why the dimensions staked out in the park last month were now 80 by 55 feet, 4,400 square feet? That is more than one-third of the park, one-third of a park that is used by children and entire families on a daily basis. And contrary to some perceptions that the park is underutilized, that is not the case. On any given day, you will see an exercise class, as people have mentioned, children and their parents playing catch, soccer, frisbee, or lacrosse. And as a matter of fact, recently, when we met with some of the board and staff of the Reston Association in the park, a frisbee came sailing by and almost hit us. My personal favorite use for the park, though, was baseball. All through my son's Little League career, our family would go to the park regularly to play catch and practice pitching and batting. I would even get up there and bat. I'm petite, you see? I was a perfect strike zone for my son when he was about 10. It worked out really well. So we would lay out all the bases, like a real baseball diamond, and play a game with the neighborhood kids, me included. I ask, isn't one of the basic principles of Reston the preservation of nature and open spaces? Taking away one-third of the park is in direct violation of that principle. Another major concern that's been mentioned is traffic congestion. That will result, there can be two teams of four players each on one court. If there are two courts, that would be 16 cars plus spectators. Our streets, as has been mentioned, are narrow, and parking is prohibited. It would become a safety issue if emergency vehicles could not reach their destination. And while bocce is being advanced as a family game, the truth is, it has become quite popular among young adults. And I'd like to quote from an August 13, 2013 NPR online article, and I quote, "That's the draw, a social game at a social gathering, drinking and playing. The two go hand in hand, literally, a bocce ball in one hand and a drink in another, and that's something that makes bocce such a great game for young people." Well, even Mr. Chu agrees that drawing this type of crowd is probable. He stated at the Cabot's Point Cluster meeting that the bocce court might attract the bar crowd from the nearby lakeside restaurant. And I ask, is this really the kind of atmosphere we want right next to a tot lot? I think not, and I'm sure the parents of the children that play nearby would agree. And in conclusion, for all the above stated reasons, I submit that a bocce court should not be built at the Cabot's Point Park and that a more suitable location in Reston should be found. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, are you waiting to present?
I traded places with Chuck.
You ready to go? Okay.
My name is Robin Parker. Not related to all those other Parkers. I live at 2110 South Bay Lane. I've lived in Reston since 1979, and I'm an original homeowner on South Bay Lane. A lot of my points have already been covered. I'll try to make it short. That park up there has always been, by everybody I know, it's been referred to as a tot lot, and that's the way it's always been used. It's very small, and for most of us who live in the neighborhood, there are actually five clusters right within walking distance, all of which have homes that have no yards of their own. They're either townhouses or zero lot lines. And we have been told by people who moved into our neighborhood that the reason, one of the reasons, they overcame their reservations about having no yard was the fact that the tot lot was up there and available for the kids to play in. So it feels to us like adding a bocce court up there is kind of changing the direction from a way from family usage towards something that will attract more adults and kind of a destination for adults from all over the town or the city probably. And of course, when you get more adults, you get more cars. The only legal parking at that lot is a little short part of Cabot's Point Lane, which I believe is maintained by the state. And everything else has been mentioned is private streets owned and maintained by the clusters, and they're only wide enough for two cars to pass each other going up and down. And in fact, parking on those streets is actually a safety violation. So because of these reasons, it's very difficult for me to believe that any thorough analysis of park use would have concluded that this little park of all the parks in Reston is the very best place to put a bocce court. Beyond that, I also have concerns about the processes that were used to approve this change to the park. In our cluster, we take really great pride in maintaining our homes and our landscaping and our common property. And we struggle sometimes, as we're doing this, to understand and comply with the Reston Association design standards and the processes that we go through in order to maintain our homes. But we believe in the concept of a planned community, and because of that, we try to comply and strive to meet the requirements for the common good of the whole neighborhood. This is why it's particularly galling to me that the Reston Association does not seem to have followed its own processes. Even assuming a thorough analysis was done, the first we heard anything about it was in June, as you have heard, and of the three immediately adjacent clusters to this park, South Bay is the only one which actually has homes which are right on the border of the tot lot. And it's inconceivable to me that those people were never notified that this is going to be happening or that, let alone the association board, and that they were never given an opportunity to voice their concerns about what seems to us to be a major repurposing of the park. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, David Thomas.
How are you doing? It's good to, I really appreciate you giving me this opportunity to speak before you tonight. And my name's David Thomas, and I live at 2258 Cedar Cove Court. I'm a Restonian for 44 years, and I'm proud to say that. And my brother Jeff, I'm proud to have him on the board as well. And you know...
He looks very busy for 40 years, too.
Wait until this moment. I will say this, that we do have a new board here. Some of you are new to this and when all this happened and occurred. But I will say this, first of all, before I go, I did want to, let me have the kids, each of them just say their names before I apologize, but go ahead. Why don't you say each of your names?
John Thomas.
Okay.
Julia.
Kyla.
Amelia McHale.
Great, thank you. And you know, we're proud to be here, but one of the things actually, and Richard, I don't know if you know this, but if I may, if we could just say, Jim Randall is a neighbor of ours, and he passed away yesterday. And if I may, just in his honor, just to give a quick little moment of silence, just 10 seconds, if I may, but... Well, thank you. I appreciate that, allowing me to do that, because he was a good man, and you know, he'll be definitely missed within our community, the Cedar Cove. But one of the things, a lot of things have been covered here in terms of process. I think you guys have a lot of things to answer in terms of that, and that's something you guys are going to have to address as the board in terms of how this occurred. And I will say this, as somebody that pays over $500 a year and has been paying for years, and my mom pays, and my twin sister over there, she pays, you know, she lives over on Lake Throw, is that we really expect our governing body here to do an outstanding job. And I know that Kate is new here as well, as the president, which we're great to have her on board as well. And I just really, I hope that this comes to be to where you really find the answers to this. But I will say this, on the bocce court, the area which you're looking at is the last gem, I believe, in Reston that we have. The battle in which we have is, you look over here at this picture, everything you guys talked about when you run for office is what? Preserve open space. Look where those kids are lying in. Grass. And you guys are taking a bocce court, putting it on, a perfect gem within Reston, that Robert Simon founded a long time ago, as we know, and now also all of you took a stance in reference to fighting with the metro that's coming in, or the golf course, what? Preserving open space. And that's one thing that we really need to look at here, is that you're taking a perfect open field that these kids play every day after their homework is done, but we have the capture the flag game. And we have a lot of community people here and community things in here, and these kids have that. And the proposal that we're seeing here is you're going to take away that one flat land. I've raised my kids on that field. And to take that from what you're trying to do, just one court, you know, for two, one, I don't know. You've got to tell us. I don't know what's out there, because there's a lot of misinformation, and I hope we can get some answers on that, because one court along the South Lakes Drive, to me, is that's taking away the open space in which they play on. And I don't know how many of you have been to the field, but then you go down further, and then it's a hill. It's hilly down there. This is the last place that we can have that's preserved. And I really hope that you really reconsider this, because it is something in which, you know, as a father, as a Restonian, I'm a son of Reston, let me tell you, and I'm proud. And one of the things that I want to see is that we continue to fight as we grow, as we grow up through the metro, the one thing we've got to really do is preserve our land. Still, look at this, right here, that picture. You guys are putting it out there. You're marketing it to us when you run for office, preserving land. The other thing is, Reston, in your own book, Reston is a community founded on the preservation and appreciation of natural areas. Folks, this is a natural area, and it's a wonderful natural area that allows for my kids and the community kids. This is not a NIMBY issue. This is a Reston issue. And this is one thing, because all of us here from the founding communities, I don't want you to think this is a NIMBY. This is not. This is something in which Reston really needs to stand up and look at what you're trying to do. And so from there, I was wrapping up. Jeff, it's an honor, and all of you, it is an honor, and I look forward to working with you in the days ahead, but I really appreciate... But I really appreciate, for my kid's sake, is that you look to move a bocce court somewhere else. I'm not against it. I'm against the fact that you're putting it there in that place. So thank you for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas and family. Heather Thomas?
I think he said a name.
Okay.
Wait, can I get a three minutes?
You already had it.
All right. Next is Boofie O'Gorman. Boofie?
Good evening. I'm Boofie O'Gorman, 11570 Greenwich Point Road. We have nothing to say about the bocce court. I'm sorry.
It's quite all right.
I'd like to introduce all of you to Joe Crawford, who is our new executive director of the Fairfax County YMCA in Reston. And we are here to thank you, to thank the board and the amazing staff of the Reston Association for their wonderful collaboration with us for the Reston Kids Triathlon and this year for the inaugural Reston Relay Triathlon. They're both terrific events for this community, and they would not be possible without the immense help and contribution of your staff and your volunteers, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And as Boofie said, my name's Joe, you know, and on behalf of YMCA Fairfax County Reston, your, your support is both recognized and appreciated. So we just brought a small token of our appreciation for Ken, Kate, and the rest of the board. Thank you.
I'd like to invite Mary. Mary, come on up.
Yeah.
Yes, very integral to this.
Come on up. Join us here. This is not getting involved here. We just hold it in the center.
In front of the YC.
A little more, a little more.
In front of the signs.
Yes. Thanks.
There you go.
On the ground.
Thank you.
All right. Next is Nadine Van Orstel?
Van Orsdell? Yes, thank you.
My name is Nadine Van Orsdell. I've lived in Reston since 1973, and I live at 2136 South Bay Lane and currently serve on the Cluster Board. You've already heard everything I'm going to say, but I'd like to say it again in my own words. When I first became aware of the imminent installation of a bocce ball court at the top of our neighborhood street, I was immediately struck by the fact that no one knew anything about it, nor had our cluster been officially contacted regarding the installation and the impact that it could possibly have on our neighborhood. Our opportunity to appeal, in fact, was a mere three days. As our board sprung into action, asking RA why we were not consulted as an affected party, we received some very vague replies that made no sense and could not really be substantiated. The proponent of this project, Mr. Chu, an RA board member, apparently took his proposal to the Cluster Board of our neighbors at Cabot's Point as a point of information. Yet, South Bay Cluster is the real affected party as residential owners who believe that our property will be materially impacted by Mr. Chu's proposal to change the use of the park. Why did he not offer to have a similar meeting with our Cluster Board, I wondered? As you've already heard by the preceding speakers, this green space serves innumerable valuable recreational functions and is not the appropriate location for such a facility, in our opinion. But in addition to the main issue, I would like to emphasize two things that concern me the most. Both have already been addressed. Our roadway in our neighborhood is quite narrow, and Fairfax County Fire Code prohibits the parking of any vehicle on the street of South Bay Lane. And during the last presidential election, a town hall meeting was held at South Lakes High School. Cars actually spilled over into our cluster, parking two on each, one on each side of the road, all the way down to the bottom of the hill to the lake. In addition to the safety hazard, we, the residents, could not access our own homes that night. We fear with a bocce bar court there that our cul-de-sac at the top of the hill could soon become a parking lot, spilling over into the South Bay Cluster, necessitating a kind of surveillance that would require very unfriendly action of having cars towed away, which we don't want to do. I am, however, most disappointed about the abuse of the required process as outlined by the RA board to citizens of Reston. We, as a cluster, are extremely diligent, as you've heard, in following all the covenants that have been set forth by RA and DRB. We've consistently and continually followed the rules to ensure that our neighbors are aware and compliant with the design standards which apply to our own individual properties. We have just in December sought the approval of the DRB for replacements of 33 new lampposts and exterior lights. If you haven't driven through South Bay in the evening, please come have a look and see how the spirit of community and cooperation have served to enhance the aesthetics and value of a cluster in Reston. As you have so clearly stated in your mission, citizen involvement is crucial, so here we are, just simply asking for you to play by your own rules. We very much appreciate and are pleased that our voices are being heard this evening. Thank you.
All right. Vic, and I'm reading handwriting now. Vic Moravitz?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I have handouts. I'm Vic Moravitz. I live at 2413 Bugle Lane, and I will try to make use of your time the best. I want to ask your indulgence, I want to talk to you about a big picture issue. And I come to you to express my strong disagreement, RA's persistent involvement in Memorial Gardens Initiative. I believe this is a private sacred issue and not part of the Reston RA Charter. I believe there were also unintended consequences. I wish to report that I have witnessed a growing sense of angst and distrust of RA by many, many property owners as a result of this initiative. I wish to express my concern at this unintended consequence and the health of the Reston community. I would like to update you that there, since the IPAR initiative was started in 2008, there are now two, to my knowledge, memorial gardens, one at St. Anne's Episcopal, one at United Christian Parish, and maybe others. I would like to propose to you a solution for grieving families that does not involve RA. The solution is simple, but initially hard. RA just needs to say no. This is not our place. RA, RA board should pass a resolution expressing the fervent hopes, however, that our civic partners, Cornerstones and IPAR, would work together to increase the number of memorial gardens in Reston and in Herndon on the grounds of places of worship. Frankly, in my opinion, Cornerstones should take this mantle from you. IPAR could offer grants, design support, and of course, supply art, which is, I understand what they do. Over time, this problem will resolve itself. This solution does not negatively impact property rights of Reston property owners, which is the fiduciary duty of Reston Association. It does not turn Restonians against Restonians. And those of you who are not at the Monday meeting, I am told that there was a lot of heated conversation. It promotes tealing and nurtures the houses of worship in our community. There should be more memorial gardens in Reston, but they should not be on common ground. They should be on sacred ground. In closing, a word of importance on keeping the topic on our public institutions. And this is where you get to suffer through four years of global arts education where I studied the classics, and I have waited 25 years to use it. So I was taught the difference between modern and not so modern world and Western civilization. That is, the difference between separating statecraft and soulcraft. And this line goes back 900 years. If you look at the Middle East, they did not make that step, right? We think Reston is a microcosm of the world we could be, full of vibrancy, diversity, pluralism, eco sensitivity, and a sense of hope and community. We have a duty as Americans to try to get democracy right. It's a hard thing. It's not easy, but keeping separation between things private and public is a duty we owe to ourselves. As adults here in Reston, we also have a duty to teach our children to participate and provide service to the larger community. It's a great place to do that. However, if we breach the divide between public and private things so readily, history has shown we risk embarking on a very dangerous moral path. I would urge you tonight to act to cease the Memorial Gardens Initiative and return the keeping of separation of statecraft and soulcraft to others. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Peter Gridley.
I'm Peter Gridley. I live at 2126 South Bay Lane, and I've lived there since they, since they built that house. And I often go by the park we're all talking about, and I should mention that I may be addressing the wrong group in this case, but there's a piece of concrete or several pieces of concrete that are on the street because of plow destroyed part of the ramp that is used to go up across, if you cross Cabot's Point Lane and you take a walk up the path, you'll find bits of concrete that are there because a plow missed, was misaimed during one of the snowstorms. And I'd encourage you that before we build any bocce courts, we should repair the curbs. I'd also like to move, ask the board move to rescind the resolution in November to build a bocce court. And I don't have anything against bocce. In fact, mi piace molto, the deporte italiano. I like Italian sports a lot. And my wife would say that better because she's a better student than I am. We've been studying Italian for 10 years here in, in community schools. But I, my, my note was that if, if you're not in charge of fixing up the curbs, please aim me in the direction that that should be done. But I, I think it's, I see bocce in Italy, and people have a good time. On the one hand, if nobody goes, then it's a waste of space that could be used for as much fun as these people are having here. And if it's very, very popular, then it's going to crowd the streets in South, South Bay Lane. So the ideal bocce court would be neither one thing nor the other. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We'll make sure you're directed towards the curb renovation.
Thank you.
David Shapiro.
How are you doing? First, thanks for letting me address the board. My name's Dave Shapiro. I live at 2257 Cedar Cove Court, and a bunch of my neighbors are here tonight and their kids. I have two boys, Gavin, eight, and Mason, seven, and we also use the tot, not tot lot, the fields at Cabot's Point Park pretty often. I've been here a few years now, and as Dave Thomas talked about and other neighbors have talked about, we play games like capture the flags and other games like, you know, football with football because it's open space. And again, this is what Reston prides itself on. I moved into Reston because of the open space and because, you know, people are very protective about these spaces because, especially where they're being used by a lot of the neighbors. I mean, you heard neighbors from South Bay, you heard neighbors from Cabot's Point, you heard neighbors from Cedar Cove. It's pretty obvious that there are a lot of us here with children as families that use that. You know, obviously, some of my neighbors did a lot better research than I did. It seems pretty obvious that some of the rules and processes have been to, you know, for lack of a better term, skirted, and I think they should be followed. Obviously, we're here because we have a voice and we want to make sure that they're followed. I think, you know, we need to be included in the consideration of this, and obviously, we weren't included. This is the first I ever heard, I actually heard about it yesterday. So, but all of my neighbors, the same thing, we just heard about this. So, you know, we should have some say in this. We are all dues paying. We're here because we care about it, and, you know, we're not pointing fingers at bocce ball players to say they're necessarily all bad people or anything like that. We're just saying, hey, let's rethink this. Let's reconsider this. There has to be a better way that you don't have so much opposition to, in reality, I think you're, you would be, it would be ruining the lives of a lot of kids and families that use that lot. And all the neighbors, all the neighboring clusters use that. So anyway, I'll keep it, I think I'll keep it brief, leave it at that. And I would like to add, my kids both participated and the Reston kids tried, so I was real excited about that. That was a great time. So with that, I'll close by saying, I'm in opposition of, strong opposition of, the way it was handled, and I urge you to reconsider this and let us take another evaluated look at it, taking the clusters into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Renetto, and pardon me, I am reading handwriting here. Okwitz?
Very good. Good evening. My name is Renetta Okwitz. I live at 11927 Triple Crown Road. I've lived in Reston for 34 years. I'm here to talk about the Pony Barn Parks area and not the bocce ball court, but I did want to say one thing. Has anybody considered that maybe 47 tennis courts would survive in Reston and use one of them for bocce ball? Just an idea. I'm here tonight to express my views about consideration being given to repurposing the Pony Barn Parks area into a memorial garden. First of all, I want to thank all of the board for giving the residents the opportunity to participate in the planning process for the future of these areas. I'm a member of the Pony Barn Working Group and was especially here, pleased to hear from RA that recommendations from the, from this working group would be the only ones that the board would consider. We appreciate the board's recognition that those of us living in the Pony Barn area are the most important stakeholders, not the only ones, but the most important ones in your decision. Please know that this is not about what we don't want in our neighborhood. It's really about what we do want in our neighborhood. The Pony Barn Picnic Pavilion and Butterfly Meadow provide critically needed open space and play areas for children, families, and individuals from throughout Reston. Despite the erroneous impression from, from, despite the erroneous impression that these areas are underutilized and in need of repurposing, I can assure you that as someone who has witnessed the joyful sounds of children and, and their parents at play for more than 30 years, that that simply is not true. This area is a highly frequenting haven for nature lovers, families, pedestrians, picnicers, campers, cyclists, and children. It is one of the main reasons why I and my neighbors chose to live there and raise our children there. And if you live there, you would feel the same way, too. What is true, however, is that the Pony Barn Pavilion is in need of refreshing and updating, and we welcome RA's desire to improve that area. The award-winning Butterfly Meadow, thanks to Claudia, with its wildflowers, was created to provide a natural habitat for not only the endangered monarch butterflies, but for other species as well. It brings great enjoyment to all who visit. And the open field provides one of the few places left in Reston where both humans and animals are able to run free and enjoy the beauty of its natural setting. It's Mother Nature's gift to us all, and what she has given us is in no further need of improvement or repurposing. I ask, why would Reston Association even consider replacing either or both of these vibrant, open, beautiful areas? It is one of the main reasons why I and my neighbors chose to live there and raise our children there. And if you live there, you would feel the same way, too. What is true, however, is that the Pony Barn Pavilion is in need of refreshing and updating, and we welcome RA's desire to improve that area. The award-winning Butterfly Meadow, thanks to Claudia, with its wildflowers, was created to provide a natural habitat for not only the endangered monarch butterflies, but for other species as well. It brings great enjoyment to all who visit. And the open field provides one of the few places left in Reston where both humans and animals are able to run free and enjoy the beauty of its natural setting. It's Mother Nature's gift to us all, and what she has given us is in no further need of improvement or repurposing. I ask, why would Reston Association even consider replacing either or both of these vibrant, open, beautiful areas with a restricted-use reflection garden dedicated to memorializing the dead? They should remain, these places should remain a place for life to be lived and enjoyed. A memorial garden is much better suited to be housed at a place of worship or in a quiet, solemn area where it can be appropriately accommodated, maintained, and regulated. I strongly urge all of you to take repurposing of the Pony Barn Parks area off the table for consideration. You all put it on the table. Please preserve it. Preserve these precious and valuable open community spaces for continued enjoyment of all Restonians. Thank you for this opportunity and thank you for your service to Reston.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Bob Wolf. I live at 11931 Triple Crown Road, and I come to you tonight to speak about the Pony Barn changes. I don't want to start a fire here, but yesterday or last night, at the end of your meeting, there was some discussion about distrust. And I must tell you, I am in distrust of this board for some actions related to this Pony Barn and its changes. Let me tell you why. Last winter, Larry Butler caught me at one of these meetings and said there'd be some changes to the Pony Barn Pavilion, and he wanted to meet with myself and my neighbors to discuss it later on in the year. I didn't hear from him until June, July, when it was announced that we would have a meeting at the end of July in which the Pony Barn repurposing would take place, and at that time, there would be a presentation by IPAR about a memorial garden. Now, when I talked to Larry about that, he said that in April sometime, IPAR made a presentation to the board. Is that correct? They did make a presentation to the board?
I don't know the context of the question. I'm sorry.
Did IPAR make a presentation to the board in the April timeframe about a memorial garden at?
Yes, they did.
I asked Larry?
I'll check, but I'll have to check the record to see if and when they presented.
I asked Larry for the package that they made in the presentation. I didn't get one.
Okay.
I don't know if one was even created. Was there a package?
There's always a package created for, again, there's a package created for every board meeting, like the ones you have tonight.
I didn't get one. I asked for one, I didn't receive it.
You can also get them online, but we'll make sure you get a copy.
Thank you. Now, when we attended the meeting on the 30th of July, the handout showed the lack of use of the pavilion at the Pony Barn. It also showed two parcels, not the pavilion, but the pavilion and the Butterfly Meadow. It also had extensive discussion about IPAR and their plan for this area, completely foreign to the whole thing. Now, to your credit, there was a lot of people at that meeting, and there was a lot of pushback. And a week later, we had another meeting because Lucinda wasn't available at the original meeting, and at that time, at that time, the handout had nothing to do with Memorial Garden.
Mr. Wolf, I keep going, but I do want you to take in, I got a number of people behind you still want to present, so if you can.
Three minutes?
Please.
That was the one I raised my hand.
Ah, excuse me. I'll cut to the chase.
Please.
We worked for two months now in a working group. We're headed towards a recommendation. That recommendation, based on the number of people attending these sessions, as well as the overwhelming majority of comments that come in through the website, indicate we want a family-friendly facility with its natural nature preserved. I understand the board has, going to take that recommendation, and they're going to say yes or no. My question is, if you say no, where do we go next?
This is definitely a community input. The ultimate decision will always be the board.
I understand that. Will there be another presentation by some other organization?
No, this is a community-driven.
So, it's either the recommendation of the committee or there's nothing. Yes or no? Correct?
At this point in time, I would say the committee has tremendous influence on the decision for that parcel of land.
But there is an option to go someplace else, right?
There are options to take the reflection garden elsewhere, to not do the reflection garden, to repurpose the place for whatever the community and the work group wants.
If there's a major change to those parcels, will it go to the DRB?
It has to go to the DRB.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next is Margaret Gupta.
Good evening.
Evening.
This is my first RA board meeting, so glad to be here. And I want to say I'm a member of the Pony Barn Working Group also, and I'll be short on that subject because you've heard a lot about it, but I'd like to echo my support for what has been said already, and that is that the park is really a tiny place. It's a park, it's widely used, and is very unsuitable for a memorial garden for many reasons, including that. And I'd like to request that the board take repurposing of the space off the plate. The second thing I want to address very briefly is, having sat here tonight and listened to the whole issue of the bocce court in the Pony Barn, I'm really struck by how much contention there is around these issues that have to do with the process of this, that RA is following or not following. I don't know if there are procedures that are governing these types of issues, but it really seems like there's a lot of angst associated with just the process, either not having one or not following one, that could probably have mitigated or avoided a lot of the, you know, feeling, you know, feelings that have been generated, probably unduly over the angst that has occurred. So, anyway, I know the body's been in place for a long time, so actually, I'm kind of surprised that these issues are coming up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Pam Corbett, and I live on Thresher Ridge Road and, yes, 11060 Thresher Ridge Road. And I'm here to comment on the deer management discussion and here to learn, obviously, what you're going to be talking about, but I had heard four arguments for the deer hunting in Reston, and I just wanted to comment on each one of them and make a request. The first one is that the deer are starving, and I haven't, I've lived in Reston and I've lived in Fairfax County for 30 years. I've never seen a starving deer, so I would just ask that if that is the argument, if we're going to argue that we're doing it for humane reasons, then please to show us evidence that there are deer that are starving in the region. Number two, the deer population is responsible for an increase in Lyme disease. You can hunt the deer, but that doesn't reduce the tick population, and in fact, they are carried by mice and other animals as well. My first dog, I lived in North Reston when it was first being built, and we had no trees and we had no deer in that area at the time, and he was infected with Lyme disease. So, I would gather that he got it from mice or some other, or means. Three, the deer eating plants in residents' yards. I live on Lake Audubon, and the geese come in my yard every day, they eat my grass, they poop in my yard, the turtles dig holes in my garden to lay their eggs, but that's part of the deal. That's where I chose to live. So, residents' plants, I have a hard time with that argument. I was also dismayed to read that on Sourwood Lane, there was a concern about the deer-eating English ivy. That's an invasive that Reston's trying to get rid of, the area of invasive plants. There are lots of opportunities for that. You could have an adopt a spot program in the woods where people adopt an acre and they're responsible for getting rid of invasins in that area. We educate the community that way and we get some help from the community as well. Then I'd also ask that we look as much at humane measures as we do at hunting. I know we've got a lot of speakers here that are going to talk about wildlife management from the state and from the county, but let's bring speakers in that are also implementing humane measures before we make a decision. Thanks.
Thank you. Mickey Moritz, Moritz, 2413 Way Lane, going once, going twice. All right, let me, that is it for on the list. Is there anybody in the audience that did not have the opportunity to sign up on the sign-up sheet, would like to have a moment to provide the board their comments on anything? Yes, sir? See your hand in the back?
Forgive me, I didn't get to the list in time. My name's Michael Postes. I live at 11557 Maple Ridge in Reston. I'm an officer of Hickory Cluster Association, but I'm here to speak as an individual tonight. I wanted to comment on the consent calendar item number six, the air conditioning referendum. Couple of items of concern, especially since internal Reston Association processes seem to be a hot topic tonight. Total number of votes for the referendum. The relit customer list shows 368 customers excluding apartments. RA Council reported on June 12th and noted in related documents, 343. I would request that Reston Association confirm and publicly explain the eligible voter totals by group to all parties as soon as possible and well before the December 1st record eligibility date. Second item, category A member validation. I'm not aware of what happened with the other clusters, but for Hickory Cluster specifically, there were 42 total petition signatures submitted to Reston Association. There were 39 signatures validated by Reston Association and their internal review, and several were removed. However, of the validated signatures, there were still two that were actually from tenants, not category A member property owners, and this is no doubt an honest error. I can provide specifics to the staff if necessary. This results in an approximate error of about 5% of votes submitted. That's a seemingly small yet significant error. Now, I know this won't change the 20% referendum petition signature acceptance requirement, but it may impact the two-thirds referendum approval requirement if such an error rate exists overall during the voting process for the referendum, especially if tenants somehow receive member voting username and password information through the mail, if that's how you do it, similar to other Reston voting. So, a second request would please ensure and publicly explain accurate member validation plans and efforts throughout the referendum process. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else? All right, before we get to board comments, I want to give Mr. McBride the opportunity. I know he probably got stuck in that traffic like everybody else did. We had you on the agenda, this would be a good opportunity, sir, to discuss the Phase Two Comprehensive Plan amendments. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome. I apologize, I was a few minutes late, and you were spot-on about the reason. Proud corporate resident of Reston and wheelie seems a little more difficult nowadays, getting from wheelie to here, but I want to adjust your thinking from the detailed issues that you've been talking about and take a flight up to about a 30,000-foot level. We know it as the Reston Master Plan. The rest of the county knows it as the UP5 Reston Community Planning Sector portion of the Fairfax County Comprehensive Plan. I like Reston's name a lot better, shorter. What is, it's a vision for the next 30 years for the physical environment, natural environment, and the built environment. Very important guidance document, not only for Reston Association and its members, but for the county as a whole and specifically the county board of supervisors. It guides future development. We're in the second phase of amending and updating that plan, we meaning Fairfax County, all of us together. Now, there's other important portions of the Fairfax County plan that you should know either are being or have recently been amended that do affect Reston. One that's under review right now is the Fairfax County Bicycle Master Plan. Lot more resources have gone towards that plan, which is the good news. It includes a countywide trails plan and, as I said, a bicycle master plan that has both maps, texts, strategies, and policies. Important document, I know your committees are on it and reviewing it. That was scheduled before the Planning Commission, October 1st. I don't think it's been deferred again. We would need to double-check that. And it's scheduled before the Board of Supervisors on October 18th. So, that's something that all RA members should be aware of and provide input. The next one is one that was approved last July, which is the Green Building Policy Plan. That was an update to the Green Building Policy Plan of the county, which, again, is a guide used in rezonings and development to try to get more energy-efficient and more green building throughout the county. That was approved in July. Now, what we're here to talk about is, I'm just going to give you a schedule for the Phase Two Master Plan amendments for Reston. As you recall, Phase One was approved last February. That covered basically the Dulles Toll Road corridor in between Sunset Hills and Sunrise Valley Drive. Very important process, took a long time, but it is now enacted and guides the future of that area. Phase Two is the rest of Reston. It's all the communities, it's the village centers, it's the convenience centers. It is quite literally the rest of Reston. Now, the process began in June, and it's going to last until June of 2015. Lot shorter process than Phase One. So, RA members do need to read the draft text that's up. Your item D gives the website for Fairfax County, which is a very good website that the county has put together, which has all the information, the draft text. They also post comments that the community provides. So, it's a very good sounding board for the community. Not that Reston needs another sounding board. As I said, June 7th, there was an open house to kick off the session by county staff and hosted by Supervisor Hudgens. The website was established that I mentioned. New information by the county is posted almost weekly to that website. Now, we, the Vision One Plan Text was posted September 5th, so that is out there on the There was a community meeting at the Reston Association offices, again, county staff and Supervisor Hudgens hosting along with RA. That was on September 12th, a Saturday morning. The next one is to be October 18th, again, a Saturday morning. Location to be determined, I think RA has offered again to utilize its facilities. Location to be determined, I think RA has offered again to utilize its facilities. Any additional community meetings would be as needed by staff and by the board member. I suspect that one may be needed. Now, community input is received both individually to the county website by groups. Reston Association, I assume, will have some comment like it did on Phase One. That process is from September through the end of December. With the holidays, I would say really it's the beginning of December. Fairfax County Department of Planning and Zoning will have a final draft for the Planning Commission review and public hearing in mid-February is their schedule. Planning Commission would hold a public hearing in mid-April. Board of Supervisors intends to hold its public hearing based on the recommendations of the Planning Commission and community input. They would hold that in mid-June. I am told that that is a pretty firm date. They do not want to extend this process as Phase One got extended. So how does RA as an entity through its board and members comment? The members absolutely should stay abreast and comment individually. They also can address comments through you if they like, which is the representative process. We will be coming back to you at your October 23rd board meeting with a presentation of what the Phase Two Plan Text says as far as the draft plan, what suggestions we would make to that based upon your existing policies and documents. Again, what the objective is like Phase One, we want to keep what makes Reston Reston in that comprehensive plan. We want to add more in that comprehensive plan about what makes Reston Reston. So that would be the first opportunity. We'd also be coming back at your November 20th meeting because we suspect that there would be a revised draft by staff at that point and we would provide comments, answer questions and get your input so that RA could make an official comment on that. Anytime after that is beginning to be too late, although obviously they're public hearings. It's never technically too late, but the sooner we can provide meaningful comment, the better. Be happy to answer any questions about dates or process. We'll be giving the presentation about the merits of what's in the plan next month. Thank you for your time.
Any questions? Jeff, you want to start on this side? No. Lucinda?
Oh, I have a question. So you reviewed the draft plan at this point, right?
We're reviewing it now, yes.
Okay, because I was wondering, I noticed that they were looking at, I guess Reston originally had small community service areas. So for me, I live by Glade and Soapstone and it's the 7-Eleven area, like there's all those little areas.
Convenience center, I thought they're called, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and I understand that they, how many, do you know how many Reston originally had in their original plan?
I do not, but I can report that next month if that's of interest.
Okay, because, yeah, because like, you know, as one of our goals is to be a walkable and, you know, more transit friendly community, it's important for us in the neighborhoods to have places that we can walk to that are close enough.
Absolutely.
The amenities. So it's important that we, you know, increase or improve those convenience centers. So I just wondered also if you had any other comments about the walkability and how that would be affected in this plan.
We'll be addressing that.
Yeah, I think we will.
That's, that's what he stated. He's preparing that for our discussion in the upcoming board meetings. But it's useful for me to know your specific comments. In fact, the convenience centers are proposed to stay as they are in the text and there is specific text in there they've added that describes what a convenience center is and should do, so you should.
I did read that.
Give us comments on that.
Yeah, and.
Because that's very important.
Yeah, but I don't think that all of the convenience centers that were originally planned were implemented. So it'd be good if you could find out like what the original intent was. And also, a lot of the ones that are being used currently are not being used for convenience center purposes, they're being used for businesses. So they're not really serving the communities there, so people are not able to walk to the conveniences. So it would be important for us, you know, to promote walkability within our neighborhoods to be able to have convenience centers.
Understood. We'll report on that.
I have one more question. I mean, because, so maybe, you know, in your report, next report, also Fairfax County has a plan to increase the tree canopy. And when I was at the meeting where they went over the draft plan, I didn't see any plans to increase open space or tree canopy. And they said that that would have just happened in other areas of Fairfax County. So I was interested in your advice and your thoughts on the tree canopy and the development and what types of opportunities there are to increase and improve our open spaces.
Okay, we were successful, that was a objective of the board on Phase One, the RA Board, and we were successful in getting pretty good language in the text for that. Now that same language will be in Phase Two also, and we'll take a look at trying to see if it needs to be expanded even more.
Thank you.
For the sake of being way behind on our agenda, does anybody else have any questions for Mr. McBride?
No.
Thank you.
John, one here.
I just want to thank you, John, for the very, very careful work that you're doing to support RA in this discussion on development and redevelopment. I just really appreciate the capability that you bring to the table, so thank you.
Well, thank you. Ditto. Thank you. All right, thank you, sir. Hope the traffic is easier. All right, let's go to board comments. Please, let's try, we've got a lot still to go through, so I just ask you to be considerate. But why don't we start with, Ellen, why don't we start with you?
Okay, thanks a lot, Ken. I'd like to formally recognize and welcome our newest board member, Danielle Marosa. Glad to have you on board. And also to remind all of us of the big event on Saturday down at Lake Am, the 27th of this month, the 14th Annual Multicultural Festival. It'll begin at 11:00 a.m., we must pick it off the big naturalization ceremony, and then we'll have lots of entertainment, lots of good food, lots of crap. It's a wonderful event. It'll end at 6:00 p.m. and the whole family can come in. The most important thing, it's free.
Well, I'd like to thank all you for coming out and participating in these very, very important discussions. Highlight coming up this weekend is a board-led bike ride throughout Reston. I would encourage all of you to join. As you know, I'm very committed to a sustainable community, a walkable community, and this will highlight the great assets that Reston has, and so I would very much encourage you to join us.
Well, Ellen stilled my thunder. So I was. Multicultural Festival, but I also want to echo Mike's comments about it is so helpful when the community comes out to share their thoughts on the things that we as a board are struggling with, because there, there's very rarely is it easy. And, and your, the information, the input is, is very helpful. I mean, it is often the case where you come in with one idea and you leave with another based on community input, so thank you for that.
I have no comment other than to echo, or say ditto, but thank you. I understand how hard it is to get away from families and it's my deepest appreciation that you have come out and spoken so honestly.
Good evening. Thank you again for your comments, and I know we'll have some additional comments before the night is over. A couple of things to note and congratulations for the Reston Triathlon Association for hosting their 31st annual Reston Triathlon. That and the kids' triathlon and our sprint triathlon and our team triathlon that was introduced this year are a hallmark of the fitness, not only that's reflected in the RA's fitness perhaps, and we had RA members participating, but we also had RA board members participating and got the hardware to show for it. Anyway, wanted to bring attention to the fact that all the good work that the triathlon committee has done over the years and it's a hallmark for our community. Thank you all for that effort. Third oldest, too.
Yeah, I'm really looking forward to the multicultural festival.
Good.
This weekend, I'll be there from 11:01, manning the boots. I'm looking forward to that. And, you know, the idea of getting, getting community input is, has got to be a consistent theme. You know, I'm relatively new to the board, but, you know, we, we need to continue to find ways to get, to get community input at the right times and in the right, in the right ways. And that's going to be really important for us as, as we move forward with things. I can, I can, I can hear that for sure. But I do want to talk about the Pony Barn meeting on Monday. I, I was a little discouraged at, at the beginning of the meeting because I, I kept hearing what people didn't want, but as the meeting.
So many creative and wonderful things with our community. It's, it's just really great to see the community engaged and thinking about how we want our community to be and what things we want in our community and don't want in our community. And so I just think, you know, we're, we're off to a good start. I think that we'll just keep going.
Richard, are you still there?
He's not.
Okay, he dropped off, okay.
Do you want me to turn this off?
Kick off.
It doesn't.
Oh, okay.
John?
Nothing.
All right.
Welcome to Danielle. Glad she's here. Look forward to working with you and otherwise it continues to be my honor and privilege to be here.
Thank you, sir.
Know that the evil can.
Somebody's got to do it.
All right, well, again, I think everybody's said what, it's tough to be last because, yeah, most of the thunder has been taken, but again, welcome Danielle. We're looking forward to working with you and getting you into the, you came at an interesting time and there's something about being thrown into the deep end, as they say, so welcome aboard.
I got interesting.
And thank you very much for everybody. I know some have already left, but for those that are still here, thank you. I really welcome having community, not only providing the input, but participating as well, so thank you. That's, that's really important to us and we, we do not discount it. So with that, I know we have a hectic agenda here and I'm trying to get us a little bit back on track if I can. So I'm going to move on to item F and to reward everybody afterwards, I will take a quick break for everybody so we can get back to deer management afterwards. But let's move right on to the next item, which is the proposed Reston Deed, Section 6.2, the air conditioning unit referendum topic and related schedule. I'm going to read the motion and then we'll, we'll go through some question and answer periods here afterwards. Move to one, accept the request of the petitioning members and approve the action of sending the issue to repeal Section 6.2 B15 from the Reston Deed to referendum amongst those category A members subject to the air conditioning covenant and to adopt the proposed schedule for the conduct of the referendum. Do I hear a second?
A second.
All right, Lucinda, I know that you had several questions about this, so I'll start with you and we'll, we'll go from there.
Oh, I'm going to pass.
Okay, then I'll start. Yep, we'll start with you. Any questions?
No questions.
All right. John?
Nothing, it was an easy one.
Okay. Ellen?
No questions.
No questions.
Eve?
They've met the threshold, they should.
All right.
Go for it.
Danielle, anything at this point?
No questions, just, it would be interesting to see the reconciliation of the numbers at some point.
Yep, absolutely. Richard?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Okay, then I'll ask the question. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
Okay, is anybody abstaining? All right, thank you. All right, we'll move on to a break. We'll give 10 minutes. According to this clock, we'll come back at nine minutes past.
It's kind of a long.
Yeah, yeah. I'm happy with that.
I'll set your best time.
No.
It was.[1529.13]
...time after some of the discussions earlier this summer. And so what I'm going to do is tell you what we're going to tell you first. As you can see, I'm doing a little intro. We're going to bring up Kevin Rose from the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries after me. Then we're going to bring up Dr. Katie Edwards from Fairfax County. She's the Wildlife Specialist for the Police and Animal Services. Then we're going to have Claudia get up and talk a little bit about some of the other local regional programs, as well as what some of their community associations do with respect to deer hunting. And we're going to talk a little bit about the future of deer management in Reston. And we're going to leave you with a couple of questions to pick. Because we don't have all the answers, and we don't think all the answers are out there right now. Because there's techniques that are changing, and different things that you're going to hear about tonight. But really, while you're here, why even talk about deer management? You heard some of it, and even some of the comments tonight. Concerns about human health and safety, automobile collisions, Lyme disease, loss of vegetation, forest habitat, lack of biodiversity, whether it's on it with individual homeowners or on natural areas and parklands that Reston Association owns. And part of that is due to, at least right now, the lack of natural predators that were once roaming the state. And while coyotes are moving back, they're not a commanding presence on the deer population yet. Maybe one day here in Reston. So what I want to do is, real quick, just remind the board of the history of deer management in Reston. In 2006, we changed our governing documents. And at that time, we put in there a covenant that said it was permitted based upon getting Board of Directors' approval. Prior to that, our documents were silent on the issue of hunt. RA has not actively managed deer on our own property. So we've never conducted hunting on our own behalf or on the community's behalf on the RA open space. So I just want to leave that fact out there. And to do so would be, that would take place on approximately, you know, some of the 1,300 acres on almost 400 separate parcels that are scattered throughout the community. So what I want to do now, we're going to go from sort of big picture down to the more finite picture. I think that's a better way to do that. And considering that most of the laws governing deer, because it's a major mammal in the state of Virginia, occur at the state level, I want to turn the podium over to Kevin Rose, who's the District Terrestrial Biologist for Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, and let him go through some of the facts from the state level.
Thank you, Larry. The right arrow is the answer. All right. So as Larry mentioned, my name's Kevin Rose. I'm the District Wildlife Biologist from the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. We are the state regulatory agency for wildlife within the Commonwealth. When it comes to managing deer, it's a large portion of what we do. We have two specific biologists that are the deer program coordinators. They coordinate all of our programs that have to do with whitetail deer. We have a Virginia deer management plan. It's like our constitution of interests. We're currently in the revision process. As you can see, the current plan expires in 2015, and we hope to have the new plan up and running in 2015. So it's kind of, the Constitution similarly is perfect, because it's not strategic, it's just kind of operational. Okay? But everything we do is rooted in this, in this plan. One of the things in the plan is, what do we want to do with the population? Do we want to increase it, decrease it, you know, in certain places across the state? So you can see on this map, Northern Virginia, it is, we want to reduce the population of Fairfax County, Loudoun County, Prince William County, Arlington, Fauquier. We're in a hotbed of too many deer. Now, what I'm going to do is, I'm going to turn this over to Jim McGlone. We're fortunate enough to have a Virginia Department of Forestry, Urban Forester with us, and he's going to speak a little bit about impacts on forests.
Thank you, Kevin. As Kevin said, my name is Dr. James McGlone. I'm with the Virginia Department of Forestry. I have worked here in Northern Virginia since 2006. In that time, I have written a couple, or almost 100 forest management plans, and I have walked thousands and thousands of acres of Fairfax County, looking at the forest, looking at what's happening there.
The system has detected that a minimum number of lines are connected to this conference.
Sorry.
Sorry.
Thank you, Richard.
In particular, one plan that I wrote was for a 2,700-acre parcel, where we went out and did very precise calculations and measurements of things. We characterized that forest with a 99.9% accuracy. What we found was, in the shrub layer of that forest, there were 40 stems. Now, the shrub layer is the area where the young trees and shrubs live. Forty stems per acre. There's also a deer exposure on that process, on that property. And when we censused the deer exposure, we found 4,300 stems per acre in the deer exposure. Looking at the species that were represented in the part of the forest that was open to deer browse, it was all holly and beech, which are both known to be least favorite foods of deer. This was in spite of the fact that we were finding over 600 new trees, little young new germination trees, per acre on that forest. They were not surviving to become second, third, fourth, and the future of it. So if you look at this here on the right-hand side, that is what our forests look like in Fairfax, throughout Fairfax County. There are very, very few places that look like the picture on the left. When we lose the understory, we're losing a lot of wildlife habitat. We are degrading the habitat, and what is happening is, we are, and I think Kevin can probably speak to this better than I can, but we are left with generalist species which tend to be better reservoirs of Lyme disease than the less generalist species. So we are seeing a complete loss of habitat or understory in our forests here. If the population, the human population of Reston resembled the population of the trees here, nobody who was talking about the Bocchi Court would have mentioned the tot lot, because there wouldn't have been any tots to use it. Another issue that we find, and I wanted you to see this picture, particularly the one on the lower right, that is deer browse on, I believe those are Leland cypresses. That's what's called browse line. The deer have gone in, and they have stripped all the vegetation on those trees. Now, quite frankly, I don't care about those trees. The reason I want you to look at that picture is because if you go to the glade and look at the holly trees, they look the same way. So the deer are doing that to the forest first, and then they're moving out into the planted landscape. And that's what I had to say about how the deer are affecting the health of the forests here in Reston and across the county.
Thanks, Jim. Enjoy. Like I said, he's one of our foresters, he's much better qualified to speak about exactly what these deer are doing to your forests than I am. So I'm glad that we had Jim here to speak about that. So what can we do? What can we do about deer damage? There's exclusion. So fences, you put tubes to protect the plants, the young trees, from getting scraped up, or netting to keep them out of your plants. However, much of that's probably against your ordinances for RA. So deer fences have to be at least eight feet tall. I believe you have a restriction that would preclude that. Repellents. There are some repellents and chemicals that are sold by stores. Usually, it's a noxious smell, like rotten eggs or a bitter flavor. This can work a little bit. A deer that's not really hungry will turn and go to your neighbor's yard and eat his stuff first before he comes back and eats yours. A really hungry deer is, is just going to completely ignore it. The best meal you ever had is one when you were starving. They don't care about the repellents if they're really that hungry. Plant selection, the same thing applies. There are plants that deer prefer to eat, pastas, deer candy. There are plants that deer don't like to eat, American holly. But, like you mentioned about your holly trees in the glade, the deer are hungry, they're starving, they're eating the holly trees. Okay? So it doesn't really matter if you plant plants that they don't normally like to eat. A hungry deer will eat it anyway. You'll never find a deer starved to death with an empty stomach. They're going to keep eating, even if it's plants that they don't get good nutritional value out of. Removal of intentional food. This is an important one. If anybody is feeding deer, they will congregate. And it does relieve pressure from the natural environment or from your landscaping, because they come in, they eat the food that you set out for them, and then they also continue to browse everything else. It's also important to note that it is illegal to feed deer in Fairfax County from the beginning of September until the end of April. So if anybody is feeding deer in Reston, they're in violation of state law, and I'll be happy to have a game warden come talk to them. Population reduction, that is the main way that we manage deer. So how do we thin the herd? For population reduction, it's a landowner, a single landowner's property, there are no non-lethal methods that a landowner, a single landowner can employ. What is available in the state of Virginia is hunting. Our hunting season here in Fairfax County, using archery tackle, begins the beginning of September, ends the end of April. That is the longest hunting season for whitetail deer in the entire country. And then there's out-of-season kill permits. So from the time that the hunting season ends, there are kill permits that can be issued to allow someone to kill deer outside of the regular hunting season. Hunting is based, the effectiveness at controlling the population is based on harvesting the does, okay? The way I like to explain this is, if you have five does and five bucks, you take away four bucks, and you're left with five does and one buck, you've got one very happy buck, because you're going to have five pregnant does. If you've got five does and five bucks, take away, harvest four of those does, you've got one doe and five bucks, you've got one pregnancy. Okay? So by, by doing that, the most you end up with is that pregnancy, two deer, seven, eight deer at the end. Whereas if you had five does, all of them get pregnant, they could all have twins, you've got 16 deer at the end. Harvested 40% of your population still a 60% increase. That's why we target the does if we want to control the population. We have extended seasons and special regulations in problem areas. Northern Virginia is a problem area. Our seasons start beginning of September, end in April. We have an earn-a-buck regulation. What that does is, if we have a trophy hunter, somebody who wants to go out and hunt for the big rats, we force them to take does in order to be able to take multiple bucks with the big antlers. So again, we're trying to target the does to reduce the population. The impediment to hunting is either a perceived or a real safety risk. Depending on what weapons we're talking about would depend on if we're talking about a perceived or a real safety risk. I think we'd all agree, we don't want somebody with high-powered rifles hunting in Reston. However, the safety statistics show that archery tackle is in fact safe in residential areas and in parks. And Dr. Edwards will speak about the archery program that Fairfax County has. From a liability standpoint, that is a concern that many people have. There's a state code that protects a landowner who allows someone to hunt on their property. Basically, if you're not negligent, so if you don't send them over there to hunt over an open well, then you are protected from liability, as long as you don't charge that person to hunt on your property. Kill permits. The kill permits are actually not a DGIF thing. Now, we are tasked with implementing them, but it's in state code. 29.1529 is the state code that says that we will have kill permits that will allow for the killing of deer outside of the hunting season and bear, so that you wouldn't be restricted to just during the hunting seasons. However, the wording in that is it's a shall issue for commercial damage. So it's, this code is really designed to protect farms, orchards, vineyards, where wildlife are negatively impacting somebody's livelihood. That's a shall issue. We'll come out, we'll see the damage, we will give you a permit. It's a may issue for residential areas. Now, in Fairfax, we're pretty liberal with issuing these may-issue kill permits, because you do have such a deer problem in this county. Now lethal options for localities. You've got hunting. So, for example, Fairfax County, they have archery hunting that they use, managed hunts. A managed hunt, the way we define that differently is, that's when we close down an area and saturate it with hunters, and nobody else is there, so it's just hunting that day, and it's only a couple of days out of the year. Sharpshooting is done on a kill permit. We can issue a permit that will allow a municipality to use sharpshooters to call the deer. That happens in Fairfax County. It also happens Rock Creek Park, which is outside of Virginia, but where they go in and use a sharpshooter or multiple sharpshooters to call the deer instead of using hunters. Both of these are proven effective techniques. For example, in the city of Blacksburg, they had a deer problem. They enrolled in the state's urban archery program, which adds on to their seasons, so that their seasons were almost as long as what we have in Fairfax County. When they did, their DVCs, their deer vehicle collision numbers crashed. They went down drastically. Same thing in Lynchburg. So they've been able to go in and reduce the population, in that case, using sharpshooting and archery, to reduce the population and reduce the number of deer vehicle collisions in their municipalities. And there's multiple studies over decades and decades of wildlife biology. As you can imagine, whitetail deer are one of the most studied animals, because that's where a lot of people have their interest. So this is, these methods are proven, and it's supported by the science. Non-lethal methods for localities. You can do nothing. Let nature take its course. And that's a misnomer, because we don't have nature. We've taken, we've taken out all the predators. So letting nature take its course, do nothing, is really the decision to allow deer to destroy your ecosystem. Trap and transfer. It's often brought up, it's been tried. The problem with trap and transfer, it was proposed as a humane way to take deer from problem areas, move them out into the country. The problem is deer are very high-strung in a trap, and essentially, they stress themselves to death. And even after they've been released and they walk out of the trap, they will wander around for a couple of days and then drop over dead. So the mortality rate from trap and transfer usually ranges between 50 and 80% of the animals that you saved by trapping them and transferring them die from the stress of that happening to them. Additionally, you'd need a permit from us. Where would you put them? There's, there's really no place to move deer to in Northern Virginia, because we have too many already. And then we would have concerns about moving diseases around. So fertility control, we'll cover in the next couple of slides. And then for deer vehicle collisions, because that's a common concern, is the deer being hit by cars. What can be done about that? You can use fencing along roadways. You know, in Canada, they put fencing along all of their interstates. Of course, the moose that they're trying to keep out is a good bit bigger than our deer, but they invest in the fencing, and it works. Wildlife crossings, to allow the wildlife to go under or over the roads without actually walking across them. That has been shown to reduce deer vehicle collisions. Active signage. This is signage that detects the presence of something in the woods and flashes to get the attention of the driver, so that the drivers are more aware that there's potentially a deer there. Those have been shown to have some success. The whistles and the reflectors, you know, the little whistles you can put on your bumpers, or there's been reflectors that you put on the road, and when the headlights hit it, it's supposed to shine light off into the woods and scare the deer away. Those have not been shown to work very well. Or at all. The next two things I'll touch on, things that get a lot of press, so the City of Fairfax Deer Sterilization Program. The first thing to say is, it is not a proven tool. What is going on in the City of Fairfax is an experiment. Is an experiment to see, will that technique work? We don't know. And if it works, how much did it cost? What is the efficacy? You know, is this something that can be used on a wider basis? In order to do that, you have to have a scientific collection permit from the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. We issued them the permit in January of this year. Beginning of February, they went out and captured as many does as they could. They captured 18. The cost of the program, the expected cost was $1,000 per deer. The City of Fairfax Police Department had to absorb $436 per deer in their overtime to give the logistical support to the program. So the estimate is about $1,400 per doe is what they spent on those deer in January. And again, it is not a proven tool. It's not something you can go out and manage your deer with deer sterilization. Contraceptions. There's really, there's two main ones. There's the PZP, which I will talk about, and then there's Gonacon, which I'm not going to talk about. PZP is the one that's being pushed a little bit more, more research being done on it right now. What it does, it prevents sperm from fertilizing the egg. So the deer go about their normal behavior, they mate, but the eggs are not fertilized. So that they do not implant, the doe does not get pregnant. That means she goes through another cycle, and she goes through another cycle, and another cycle, and another cycle, and it will prolong the breeding season. The effects of that on the deer's health is unknown. And the effects of that on deer behavior causing deer vehicle collisions is unknown. There's a spike in deer vehicle collisions every October and November, and it's not because of hunting. It's because of the deer behavior during the breeding season. PZP makes the breeding season longer. Is that going to have a negative impact on DVCs? We don't know. It is not EPA-approved beyond research, so it's, again, it's not a technique that you can go out and use it and say, we're going to manage our deer with this. The meat cannot be consumed. So that means that all the animals have to be marked as experimental animals. They have to be captured, they have to be handled, they have to have ear tags, so that if they wander off wherever this is going on, a hunter knows, he can't eat that animal, it's not safe. It also means if that animal is killed in another way, it can't be donated to food banks, Hunters for the Hungry, where a lot of the meat from places, from sharpshooting programs and the Fairfax County Archery Program goes to feed the needy. Again, not a proven tool. It's been used on some islands, Fripp Island, Fire Island. They were able to get the population down to about 100 deer per square mile. If you had 100 deer per square mile in Reston, you would be pleading me to have somebody come in and take care of your deer problem. In a largely isolated area, at the National Institute of Standards and Technologies, which is in Gaithersburg, Maryland, there is a fenced facility, but it's not completely high-fenced, deer can walk around on the roads, but so they call it a largely isolated area. They're still at 200 deer per square mile, and they've been working with PZP on that site for years. Okay? So it's, again, it's not a proven tool. It hasn't been shown to work even in a largely isolated area, let alone a free-ranging herd. And again, it's expensive. So I'll just leave you with this, and then I'm going to turn it over to Katie, to Dr. Edwards. Aldo Leopold, who's the father of game management, said that the problem with game management is not how we shall handle the deer, the real problem is one of human management.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here tonight. My name's Catherine Edwards, I'm the new Wildlife Management Specialist with the Fairfax County Police Department. I just took over this position a couple of weeks ago, so I'm actually very new to the deer management program. So if you'll kind of bear with me, there may be some questions I'll have to follow up on, but I'd like to give you a general overview of the program, and then some specific highlights related to the urban archery program. I'm going to abbreviate part of my presentation, because a lot of the material's already been covered previously by Kevin, so I'll try to do that for the sake of time. The number one question I get, or in my brief tenure here at Fairfax County, is really, why do we manage deer? And what is the purpose of the deer management program? Is this really necessary? So as most everyone here knows, whitetail deer are one of our most common native species in Fairfax County, and I would say probably one of our most enjoyed species. However, the deer population within the county, for numerous factors, has really grown to levels that pose really serious safety and health concerns in our communities, and it's not sustainable at the level it is over time if left unchecked. Just to give you an idea of some numbers that we're dealing with, for a healthy deer population that's sustainable in the long term, we typically recommend managing deer at about 15 to 20 deer per square mile. Recent density estimates were conducted by the Fairfax County Park Authority in selected parks across the county, and they found that we have currently an average of about 47 deer per square mile, and this has variation among parks. Many of our areas are showing over 100 deer per square mile, as Kevin just referenced. That's a lot of deer, that's too many deer, and it's not sustainable by the environment over time. We manage deer for multiple reasons. The number one reason being, it's a serious public safety concern related to deer and vehicle collisions that occur annually, and this results in many injuries and even death of our residents. There's also a concern about the potential spread of diseases due to the high density of ticks that are carried by deer that can lead to possible spread of Lyme diseases other, as well as other tick-borne illnesses. In addition to these concerns, we have problems with overabundance of deer causing damage to our ecosystems, as was previously presented. So the deer management program was really developed to handle multiple reasons, but really to be able to reduce the deer population to more sustainable levels in Fairfax County in order to minimize these problems for residents and for wildlife alike. Just to give you a general idea of the number of deer and vehicle collisions we're dealing with in the county, this graph here is, was just put out last week. It's a report that's conducted by State Farm Insurance Company, showing the likelihood of a deer and vehicle collision across the country. Currently, Virginia ranks as eighth in the number of deer and vehicle collisions and the likelihood of having one. It's currently listed as having a 1 in 88 chance of a likelihood of hitting a deer with your car in the next 12 months. Now, we have some information that's reported through the Fairfax County Police Department and the Department of Transportation related to actual deer and vehicle collisions. Usually, this ranges somewhere around 100 to 200 that are reported cases within the county, including direct collisions, as well as indirect causes, such as seeing deer on the side of the road, becoming distracted, and hitting another vehicle, or swerving to miss a vehicle and having an accident with your car. However, there are many unreported cases, and we estimate that there's somewhere between 4,000 and 5,000 deer and vehicle collisions in Fairfax County annually. Most of these are the result of collisions where the deer are hit, however, there's not serious bodily harm to the driver or serious damage that requires them to report it. Just speaking with some of the animal control officers in the police department, it's been shown in the previous presentation that overbrowsing on our forested ecosystems has a very detrimental impact for deer, as well as other wildlife species. The pictures here just elaborate on the previous presentation, showing the extent of browse lines that we have in our parklands here in Fairfax County. A survey was conducted in 2010 by the previous Wildlife Biologist with Fairfax County Police Department. This was basically conducted to determine the overall level of support for deer management in Fairfax County, as well as the preferred methods for management. I'm just going to give a brief overview of this. We had over 6,000 residents that responded to the survey, with 67% of them indicating that we needed a reduction of deer within Fairfax County. The majority of respondents showed support for the harvesting of deer as a management method for deer control, whereas only 12% of respondents said that they saw no need for population control within Fairfax County. Of these methods, archery was shown to have the most support as the preferred deer management tool within Fairfax County. Now, to give just a little bit of background on the program, the Fairfax County Deer Management Program was approved and mandated by the Board of Supervisors in 1998, and it's implemented under strict oversight through the Fairfax County Police Department, and this is done in collaboration with the park authorities. The approved methods for deer population reduction within Fairfax County are those that are permitted by the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, and these include use of archery, managed shotgun hunting, and sharpshooting by police officers. All of these methods follow national best practices for deer management, and our plan is developed based on deer census data, environmental impact studies, scientific literature, and program models in other jurisdictions. Our program also encourages the use of humane exclusion and repellency tactics when deer are on your private property and they're considered to be a nuisance or they're causing damage. So many of the methods that Kevin had just elaborated on, including the fencing, the use of chemical repellents, and planting of unpalatable or less preferred vegetation. I wanted to give you some general idea of the numbers we're dealing with in terms of harvest. This graph shows the total harvest numbers from fiscal year 2005 and through 2014. You'll see the sharp spike in green is when the archery program is actually added, and over 70% of our harvests come from the archery program that was implemented in 2010. To give more specific numbers, these are numbers from fiscal year 2014, so last year's deer season. We harvested 978 deer total within the three management methods, with archery accounting for 848 of these, or about 87% of the total harvest. 72% of these total harvests- 72% of these total harvests were does. Now, to highlight more on the urban archery program, archery was actually approved by the Board of Supervisors as a management method in 2000, but it was not implemented until later in 2010. The way the program works is we have archery groups that are led by experienced group leaders, and they're allowed to conduct deer management only at specific assigned sites on approved parklands. The program is operated, it began on September 6th, and it extends until February 21st of next year. Hunting is allowed to occur Monday through Saturdays, beginning 30 minutes prior to sunrise, extending throughout the day until 30 minutes past sunset, and we currently are not permitting any hunting on Sundays with this program. Being that this is conducted through the Fairfax County Police Department, safety is really our number-one consideration, so we have many rules and protocols in place to make sure that our park patrons, as well as our archers, are kept safe. All of these parks remain fully open during the archery season. However, as Kevin mentioned, we have an excellent safety record when it comes to archery. We have no injuries reported through the Fairfax County program, and in fact, there have been no injuries or deaths associated to bystanders from archery tackle in Virginia in the past five-and-a-half decades. Currently, for fiscal year 2015, we have 25 different clusters of parkland, and this includes portions of over 60 parks that have been assessed with site visits and determined to be safe for the use of archery in Fairfax County. And we also currently have 777 skilled volunteer archers that are participating in the program. Just to show you a little closer to home here, this table or this graph here shows the approved Reston cluster that's occurring with the deer management program. This includes archery use on 603 acres that are managed, including portions of Fred Crabtree Park, Little Difficult Run Stream Valley, Difficult Run, I'm probably going to say this wrong, but Garshane, and Wable's Mill Meadow. All of the archers that are included in the Fairfax County program have to be in compliance with all permitting, game licensing, and hunter-safety education requirements that are mandated by the Virginia Department of Game and Inland Fisheries. All of our archers are also required to pass a proficiency test in order to display their superior marksmanship and skill using a bow, and this is done under the supervision of experienced range masters at determined locations by the Fairfax County Police Department. Archers also have to follow a really strictly enforced ethical code that's been established since the beginning of the program to ensure safety of park patrons, of the archers themselves, as well as a respect for wildlife. We share information about this program through various means to make sure the public is aware of all program activities and has an opportunity to comment and share their concerns. We mail notification letters to all of the property owners that are near or adjacent to park locations. We also conduct public information meetings in order to present safety briefings and then answer any concerns that residents have. All of the park entrances and trails that are on approved locations are posted with deer management signs, such as the one shown here in this picture, indicating the archery's in progress. We've also issued numerous press releases and are creating a video for deer management that's available through the Fairfax County Newswire, local media, and social media as well, and all of this information is also available through our website with the Animal Services Division. As I said previously, the archery groups are led by experienced group leaders, but these group leaders have to maintain daily contact with our deer program manager with Fairfax County Police on a daily basis. Archers have to undergo a mandatory safety briefing, along with these other qualification requirements, in order to participate in the program. Archers also have to maintain very detailed hunt logs, so every time they're on a property, they have to record detailed information, including dates, specific times, which area they were at, number of deer observed. They have to individually mark each of their arrows so that they can quantify them at the end of the day, whether they've lost any, shot any, the number of deer that are harvested and retrieved, as well as biological information on the deer themselves. This information is then taken, it's entered into an electronic database within 24 hours of each hunt, so that this can be monitored daily by the archery group leader, as well as the program manager with the Fairfax County Police. Anyone that's found to violate the standards of this program is immediately removed from the program indefinitely. All of our activities are conducted under strict protocol. All of the harvesting activity is conducted from tree stands that are elevated, using the ground as a backdrop, and these are permitted to be no closer than 100 feet from a property line, or 50 feet from an established trail within the parkland. We also require that our archers carry program identification cards. We're actually working to improve this next year or later in the season, so they have placards that they could wear on their vests or on the back, so that they can be visible to people from a distance, instead of having to approach and ask for program identification. They also have to display a visible parking pass and park in approved lots, so people know when they're on their premises, which area they're allowed to hunt, and that they're associated with this managed deer program with the county. Our archers are not allowed to set foot on private property unless they have permission by the owner or tenant. Now, we encourage them to speak with owners ahead of time to really be able to have a discussion about the management program, and to hopefully receive access to the property in the rare cases that deer travel onto property and need to be tracked and retrieved. So to give more information on private property and deer management, I'd like to turn the discussion over to Jim Lewis to say a few words on that with Reston.
Thank you very much. You've seen me before, here we go again. I'm Jim Lewis, address 1911 Buckthorn Lane, Reston, and I'm one, again, of the two infamous guys that went through a process with the board a number of years ago with regards to hunting on our property. I'm going to go back, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but 2004, my friend and neighbor over here contracted Lyme disease, and I started seeing a lot of things occur on our property too. All the brush was gone, my garden was history, et cetera, et cetera. As a result, we chatted, and then we found out that Whitetail was an organization we could chat with, and we weren't sold on the organization at all, because we didn't know anything about hunting. None of us are hunters, but we knew we had a problem. It was deer, as far as eating everything. We had seen the deer eat the shrubs and everything, and we were fairly well convinced Lyme disease, you know, may have come from a tick or something like that, from a deer. We didn't know for sure. So anyway, we met, and we had the neighbors come over, and we all talked, a number of the neighbors did, and we listened to Whitetail's pitch, and it was, it sounded really good. And what we learned after having listened to them, we decided, let's give it a shot and see how this thing works. Now, interestingly enough, at that time, that's when we learned how particular Whitetail was with regards to the approach that they wanted to take on our property. There were several neighbors that wanted hunting done on their premises. That Whitetail, when they looked at their property, they nixed it right away. They decided to go with our properties. We have three adjacent properties, all woods. By the way, that overused, you know, underbrush or whatever, one of the pictures to the right in the very beginning, that's what the back of our yards looked like. We're on a ridge, and in the back, the ridge goes down to a small stream. And we were advised also by the state gaming person who came up and looked at our properties, that we literally had the highway for deer. That was the quote that she told us, you have a superhighway for deer. So anyway, we decided to give it a shot. This is 10 years ago, and our hunter, who is still here today, thank God, Fred, came out and started working the property, and at that time, we had no issues at that point, and then RA came out with a covenant change. Now, I'll be very honest with you, Bob and I, my neighbor, we discussed whether we should even come before the board and let you all know whether this was going on. As you well know, there's probably some hunting going on that has not come before the board, but we decided to do the right thing and just lay out what we had, what was going on, and we were probably, I believe, the first applicants to go through that process. It was a very contentious process, it was not good for us with our neighbors, I will say that, but at this point in time, our neighbors and us were fine, because you know what? Over 10 years, there has not been an issue. It's run flawlessly, and the number of deer that's been taken out of our properties is 52 to this very day. Now, we did shut down for two years because of the court case. We just decided, okay, let's just put this on the back burner, because we don't know how this is going to turn out and everything, so, again, we tried to do the right thing. So all I'd like to say is that it's been a flawless process, and I'll tell you this, we talked today about this. If we had never come to this board, you nor our neighbors would have ever known we hunted on our property. That's how clean this program has run with Whitetail. So I'll just, I don't know of any better way of summing this thing up. They're professional, and the operation and the techniques that they incorporate are fantastic. Fred reports every time he calls a deer, but it's interesting, when I hear this, he just did it the other day. We just had two come out within the past two or three weeks. He also, and he always does this, he said, "I saw three or four more, but it was approaching the RA boundary," or the creek, which is off of our property, and he said, "I couldn't shoot." So that kind of gives you a feel for how stringent they adhere to whatever guidance they're giving from the community. At least, that's the way it's worked, you know, in our piece of Reston. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon.
So I was asked to speak tonight about the program at the city of Fairfax, what has occurred in Montgomery County, Maryland, and what other community associations are doing. So for this, I'm referring to a memo from Robert Duncan, excuse me, who's the executive director with the Game and Inland Fisheries. So we've been asked, in many instances, what about the non-lethal alternatives to hunting or sharpshooting? And as we've learned from the case studies that were done in the city of Fairfax, productivity, control, and deer remains largely experimental, and appears to be useful only in closed populations such as islands or fenced areas where deer are approachable and unable to disperse naturally.
Buddy, we're bringing your water.
Thanks. So the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries issued a scientific collection permit to...
We have something for you.
Thank you. Thanks, Sharon, sorry about that.
Said Luke Goss, Monty. They have Starbucks.
So thanks. The Department of Game and Inland Fisheries issued a scientific collection permit to white buffalo to conduct the efficacy of the experimental non-lethal surgical sterilization approach to reduce the deer. And Kevin talked about the difference between a scientific research project and a management program, and he also commented that the expected cost of sterilizing the doe turned out to be about $1,436 per doe. The media reports had quite a bit of misinformation and often presented false information as And the results of this program are expected in 2019, so it's over a five-year study, and so that may inform future Department of Game and Inland Fisheries decisions about non-lethal management. So at this time, the use of non-lethal management methods to manage free-ranging deer are unproven techniques, and in fact, the agency will not issue a permit to allow an unproven technique to be implemented as a management technique. Additionally, the Game and Inland Fisheries will monitor and evaluate the results of the program in the city of Fairfax, and the results of the ongoing research into the surgical sterilization and the contraception techniques. So the second thing I was asked to address was what has happened in Montgomery County? So about 20 years now, they've had a deer management working group that was formed just like Fairfax, and a management plan was approved in 1995. Their first management hunts were held in their parks, and they annually review the data and publish a report with recommendations for the coming year. Members of their working group are made up of various agencies, just like the Fairfax County Management Group, and some of the participants are the Montgomery County Department of Parks, Department of Natural Resources, Police Department, National Park Service. So the goal of their comprehensive management plan is to reduce the deer-vehicle collisions, to reduce the depredation to crops and to ornamental shrubs and gardens, to reduce the impacts of the natural vegetation, and to preserve the natural biodiversity, and also to develop a county-wide education program. So some of the components of the educational programs have included an informational brochure and information on their webpage and through their libraries. They also have had programs at their nature centers and on the local cable TV, and they've had homeowner workshops, and have had landscape professionals attend. And their program also addresses the deer-vehicle collisions, or DVCs, and they're improving their data collection and mapping. They're working on the public service announcements and safety information on cable TV. They have also implemented a program to allow fencing and to use repellents to alter the habitat, and they also changed the county code to allow eight-foot deer fencing on side and backyards of all the agricultural land and some of the homeowner property. The legal bag list, the results to date, citizens have more tools and knowledge to help reduce deer impacts on their own property. On average, deer populations have been reduced by 59 to 89% where management is occurring. Deer-vehicle collisions around these parks have been reduced, and this is the important part of this, that areas with no management, small parks, private lands, less than a quarter a mile from managed parks, have continued to experience increasing deer impacts. So they also looked at how they can address their continuing challenge, and so they're making regulation changes by reducing the safety zones for archery hunting and sharpshooting, and they're developing innovative ways of increasing access to both public and private lands. They're also looking towards developing funding sources for management opportunities, and most importantly, they're continuing their emphasis on public education. So they have a lottery-based management shotgun hunting system, and they have a group hunting program utilizing suburban whitetail management like we have here, and also they have a sharpshooting program. So we were also asked by you all to address these questions of six different community associations. One, do you allow bow hunting on common areas of the association? And two, do you have any rules or restrictions on bow hunting on your common areas? And does bow hunting in your common area affect the cost of your liability insurance? And thank you, Sabrina, for looking this up, I think you were the ones that gathered this information. It's a little hard to read on that handout, but as you know, here at RA, the Board of Directors may consider member requests for permission to hunt on their property, but they may not hunt on common areas. And also, there is no hunting on common areas, so the answer would be no for the insurance requirement. In Columbia, that has over 30,000 units and over 3,800 acres, the answer to question number one is, it's not explicitly addressed in their documents. It's never been practiced, that they know of, but they do cooperate with county deer hunts in surrounding areas by granting easements for access. And it's hard to read again, but the answer to question number two is no. And in Montgomery Village, the answer to question one is, no hunting of any kind is allowed. Deer management in surrounding areas are led by the county or the state. At Seepine's Plantation in Hilton Head, South Carolina... At Seepines Plantation in Hilton Head, South Carolina, with over 1,800 acres of open space, the answer to question one is, yes, the association has the state license to use silenced rifles for deer culling. Answer to question two is, covenants allow for wildlife management by trained staff only. There's no other hunting allowed. And their answer to question number three is covered under their general liability and umbrella policies. King Grant Open Space Association, which is in New Jersey, has 400 acres of common area, and no hunting of any kind is allowed there. And lastly, in Ford's Colony in Williamsburg, Virginia, with 73 acres of common area, their answer to number one was, yes, urban deer management season is early September to late March. Deer hunting is restricted to contracted firms' personnel. And the, their last question, question number three is about liability, is no, the firm provides indemnity to the association. So, I'm going to turn it back to Larry to wrap us up here.
We had an hour on the agenda, and we are going to try to make that.
Thanks for the water.
So, you've heard a lot of information, again, starting with big picture with the state, down to the county, and some local experience. I want to thank Jim, and Jim, and Katie, and Kevin for coming out tonight. And obviously, we'll be here for questions. But I want to leave you with some thoughts. So, we have some recommendations here, and the next slide is really sort of the, kind of the jack-handed, deep-thought things that you need to think about going forward. So, our recommendations here, increased education efforts. I mean, we think that's really important. I mean, as Montgomery County, they've shown some success with that, about the impacts of deer, coexistence, exclusion, non-preferred landscaping, you know, the, the whole gamut on, on deer management and how to coexist with them as well, as well as the specific management options. We want to continue Claudia's recent involvement with the Fairfax County Deer Management Working Group, which she's gone to a couple of recent meetings, and I think she has found that very useful. And that group, similar to the one that she showed with Montgomery County, is looking at, you know, what are other places doing? What are the best practices that we can employ? What are the emerging trends and techniques and things like that? And keeping abreast of that, so we think that's really important. Increasing coordination with Fairfax County. Fairfax County owns a lot of property in Reston, but also immediately a budding Reston. And so, you know, there's kind of this little question here. The county has done some managed hunts on Fred Crabtree Park down in South Reston. I don't think they've done them at Lake Fairfax, where we have a lot of a budding property as well. But there's a consideration there, you know, extend their, their reach perhaps onto the adjoining association property, kind of a consideration. Continue the bow hunting application process for owners that we currently have and that you all have recently been working with. And then, again, evaluate emerging, emerging practices as they come forward, or as they become more commercially available. Because as you heard, one of the things that we heard about in the initial deer discussions earlier this year is, oh, the City of Fairfax are doing this. Well, what we've heard tonight, it's experimental. It's, it is not a management technique. But perhaps, one day, it will, and perhaps, two, three years down the road, there'll be some other technique that it actually is a commercially available, available management technique that we can employ. So, really, then, here are some questions to consider. Should RA participate with Fairfax County controlled hunts on adjacent RA property? So, that's one. Should RA permit controlled hunts, sharpshooting, bow hunts, on its own property in certain locations? That's a, that's a tough question right there. Should RA permit higher fences for exclusion purposes? That's a covenants question. You saw Montgomery County, they said, hey, rear yards and side yards, eight feet, that'll keep the deer out. Right now, I think our max, under our covenants, is probably six feet, does not keep deer out. So, if an individual wants to protect their own property at that sort of home base, you know, perhaps a consideration of some type of higher fencing might be worth considering. But that's something that I think the Design Review Board and the Board of Directors will have to, to tackle. And then, should RA continue its practice of evaluating and approving individual hunting requests by property owners? And, you know, that's something that we have been doing. I know staff supports that. But I wanted to leave you with these questions, because we really think, right now, based upon the information that we've learned and that you've heard tonight, that these are kind of the immediate, germane questions with respect to deer management in Reston. And with that, we have some people here, and we would entertain questions of the board.
Yep. Start around the table. Go for it.
I had a question, but with the, for the forestry expert.
Yes, sir.
I forget your name, I'm sorry.
Jeff.
Jim. The, has, and maybe Larry, too, has an assessment been done of the impact of deer populations on the RA common areas?
Actually, I'd like, yeah, I'd like Claudia to address that, because we've actually done a couple of disclosures.
Good.
Well, but more importantly, the people that have asked permission to hunt on their property, when we've gone to their property, what we find is Christmas fern and missing understory. There aren't any of the new tree seedlings that are coming up, there's no shrubs. Christmas fern is one of the plants that we find they just don't like. And I know when we went out to your property, tons of Christmas fern and greenbrier, and that's about it. So, we have seen impacts and less of the woodland wildflowers and less of the native shrubs and seedlings coming in.
Okay, because I, I guess, you know, for, for me, that, that's an important fact, that we have a fact base that say, hey, we do have a real negative impact on our, on our spaces, that we can say factually, not just anecdotally, well, this property is this.
Right.
You know, some type of, of survey, because I want to be sure, you know, we're moving forward, making decisions based on real information.
Sure.
I wouldn't say that I've done a formal survey of Reston Association, but I have walked the woods, and one of the things I always look for when I walk the woods is Fairfax County's young trees, and they aren't there.
Oh, so, do, does the Reston Association, like, monitor the health of the forest? Because I, I like Jeff's question about, you know, how has the deer population affected it?
Yes.
Is there...
Yes, we're always out looking at the health of the forest. We do our annual walk on our property. We call them remote strip inspections. So, we look at it every winter. When we're looking for violations, we're looking for encroachments. And so, we're always kind of assessing the health of the forest and, and noting areas where there's a decrease understory.
So, has the health been increasing or decreasing?
I would say, over time, it's decreasing.
Do we have any, any numbers of the number of deer per square mile in Reston?
We extrapolated, we did some night, I think it was about five, six years ago.
Yeah.
And I think we extrapolated...
I mean, look, looking at the map of Fairfax County, clearly Fairfax County has a major problem, clearly. But looking at the map of the management, of the areas, of the management park areas, there are fairly large swaths of land, and those are heavily forested, very, very different from Reston.
We were conducting deer surveys, and we had staff go out at night with spotlights, and we hit all the different areas in Reston, and it was overtime for us to go and do the deer surveys, and our board at the time, and Milton had asked us to not do that anymore.
I'm just looking at the numbers, because you're going to a county-wide average, that's kind of skewed, you've got hundreds per mile in Sully, and two in Vienna.
Well, and I, and I think, interesting, your, your comment, though, about, you know, most of the counties wooded. If you look at an area photograph of Reston, it looks very wooded. And actually, the preferred habitat of deer is the broken landscape, not just woods. In fact, if you go out, if, you know, anybody that's been out in the mountains, you see fewer deer in the mountains than you do here, because of the broken landscape, because of the habitat and, and what you have in the yards and so forth. So, in terms of an exact number, do we have 15 per square mile? Do we have 35 per square mile? We don't have that exact metric, because I think that would require some really in-depth study.
Even an approximation?
Yeah.
I would ask, maybe Katie could, you know...
I really don't have that information for the specific parks that we're managing for the county. I contacted Fairfax County Park Authority, they most recently did aerial infrared surveys of selected parks throughout the county this past winter, but I'm not sure specifically those parks were located in Reston, as they estimated here.
We had asked Wolf Trap not too long ago, and I think the number, 30 to 50, was the number, I believe, I remember hearing from them. They did a study over there. That's pretty close. It's not Reston.
Ken?
I, I do have one more question. Just a curiosity, I mean, in several of the slides, I think maybe the first set of slides, there was a distinction made between archery and sharpshooting. And that, that distinction carried on in several slides and then in the second presentation. Could someone describe why there's a distinction made?
Sure. Sharpshooting is using a professional with a firearm, basically thinks sniper rifle. So, in Fairfax County, it is actually an attack team, it is the best of the police officers out there with high-powered rifles shooting deer. Managed hunt is when you take an area and close it down. So, they do it, it's, Fairfax County, they do it in Sully Woodlands. It's close to the public, you know, all of the areas patrolled, and then you saturate with hunters. So, there's, you know, hunters 200 yards apart from each other throughout the place and, and detecting deer with shotguns. So, again, firearms. Archery, however, you generally don't do that where you have saturated area. You would have the hunters being able to come in and use, and, and hunt, but not a whole bunch at the same time. So, with the archery program in the parks in Fairfax, you have around 30 guys that are allowed to hunt within this 600-acre area. They're not all out there at the same time. And so, you don't have, you know, hunters at every corner, and the park is open to the public. It's a much shorter-range weapon. Archery tactics are extremely safe, because they're up in a tree stand, they're firing down, short shots, 20, 30 yards tops. So, it's something you can do within a residential area or within a county park, if the park is actually being closed. So, that's kind of the tier of those differences.
One thing, one thing about the archery program, it costs a taxpayer nothing. All the other programs cost money.
That is...
That's a good thing.
If you were to hire a sharpshooter to come in, there's, there's a company, White Buffalo, the ones that are doing the deer sterilization in the city of Fairfax, he'll come out and he will sharpshoot deer for you, and it costs around $500 per deer. He has a contract with the county. So, it costs the county around $500 per deer and shoes. So, if that was something you're interested in, that's approximately what you're looking at, cost-wise, to hire somebody to come in and do sharpshooting.
Well, that's snipers, actually.
Nothing for me, Ellen.
Well, I, I guess, my friend John asked the question that I wanted, the number of deer per square mile. I guess we do not have that information for Reston, Claudia.
It would, yeah, we do not have an accurate information. What we'll try to do is contact the park authority and see the closest, best information that we can get, you know, based upon their, you know, last winter. The difficulty with finding it exactly for Reston is that we don't, Reston, you know, doesn't have borders, you know? Deer do cross borders and come and go. So, we could only get an estimate based upon standardized survey techniques through the literature and what, you know, the state and others have done. We say, okay, well, if you go out and, and do, for every 20 hours of spotlighting that you do in this month, you can extrapolate the number of deer you get by, you know, 1.5, and that'll give you an estimate per mile or something. I mean, there are metrics for that kind of stuff, but that, for us to do that would require a lot of staff time, as Claudia noted, that we had done a few years ago. And, yeah, we, we could do that, but first, I'd like to look at the existing data that might be out there.
I've got about six that hang out in my desk.
Spotlighting on your deck.
I don't need to have a spotlighting. Even when I come home from work, they're on my hill. Hi, Mr. Thomas, how you doing?
Mike?
Yeah, just really appreciate this very broad and deep discussion on deer management here in Reston. I think it's Jim Lewis, correct?
Yeah.
Jim, really appreciate you bringing it to the board for discussion rather than just do it, because I think that us understanding what you're dealing with and how we can facilitate good processes here. From what I've heard, clearly, this is a, a major issue in, in Virginia, northern Virginia, not necessarily unique to Reston. It sounds like we can manage it using controlled hunts and otherwise relatively well. But the fact of the matter is, a healthy population is, you know, something in the order of 10 or 15 deer per square mile, and we've got much more than that in the northern Virginia region. What is it that we can do at the association to encourage the state to be more aggressive? And do these more aggressive programs work?
Quick, take a crack at that.
State be more aggressive? There's nothing that the state can do to be more aggressive in this area. Right now, Fairfax County has the most liberal deer hunting seasons, regulations, anywhere in the United States. Well, Fairfax, Loudoun, and Prince William, all three have the same regulations. They are the most liberal seasons. There's no daily bag with us, there's no season bag with us. We've got herbivores, if you want to take the big antlers, you have to take the does. Season starts beginning in September, ends the end of April. The reason we don't have a year-round season, the reason that it's not year-rounded and stops there, is because when you get to the end of April, that's when the fawns are being born. We don't want to orphan fawns, because then the fawns will starve to death. Starts the beginning of September, because by the beginning of September, the fawns have weaned. They're usually still with the, the does that they are feeding on grass and browse, so they're not dependent on their mothers. So, that's as, as far as we can go and still be ethical about how we're treating these Other than that, it, it's up to municipalities, it's up to the residents, if they want to take action. If they want to take action, if you want to take action, we must definitely work with you, but we won't force anything.
That's very helpful. Are there other states? I think you had mentioned that we're number seven in terms of vehicle deer collisions, seven or eight or something like that. Are there other states that have been more successful over time in reducing the number of collisions through hunts or otherwise? Or are we going alone here?
Other states have been successful in reducing deer-vehicle collisions. But it's always a local thing, you know? Look at what's going on, and this is distributed, you know, they don't move around like gas particles and spread out evenly. They're clumped, and so, you could have 50 deer per square mile in Reston and have, in Fred Crabtree Park, where they've been hunting it for years, have 30. And then, you look at the data for Fred Crabtree and go, oh, well, that's right adjacent to us, so, you know, they've got 30, we've got 30. Well, Fred Crabtree Park is hunted. So, no matter what you find there, even if they have good data, they're unexpected to be lower than it is in Reston, Reston. Other places that have had success are always limited by the urban landscape. That is the big challenge. Where we have, for example, western Prince William County, western Loudoun County, where we can use firearms, it's relatively easy to control the deer herd, because you can take a 200-yard shot with a 30 on six. Can't do that with archery tackle. So, it's much harder, much more time required to harvest deer using archery tackle. So, up in down the eastern seaboard, we have, in Connecticut, in New York, places where it's built up like it is here in Reston, and the only thing you have is archery tackle. But places like Blacksburg have had success.
Thank you.
I have a recommendation, because it always seems like Reston's asking, what can the state do? What can the county do? It's like, you know, limited funds, limited resources. Why don't we ask whitetail recommendations, head of state? What they would recommend, how to manage this best, given Reston's uniqueness and everything. I know, last time we were here, we were chatting with Brian, who's a head of whitetail. Sorry, sadly, he couldn't make it tonight, but I think he has some ideas. I don't know how appropriate they were or whatever, but that might be something to consider, too. They're somewhat familiar with Reston, obviously. Go ahead.
Thank you. My question is, is about how effective, Claudia, what have we seen in the areas that are, that have been hunted? Is there understory coming back? Are they, I mean...
I haven't been to your house since you've had the hunt, so I, I don't know, I haven't been to his properties since this...
So, how many years have you guys been hunting?
Ten, ten years now, you've had the hunt.
Ten years, fifty-two.
Okay, so, and, and what is the impact, what is your understory? What is your understory look like? Is it back? Is it?
No, because the deer are constantly coming. You know, the deer aren't static. They move all the time.
That's my, my question is really is about.
Some weeks I'll stay if I was out there and I speak alone.
Has been hunting the Conway Robinson State Forest, which is 440 acres in Gainesville, since 2008, I think we've had, or six years now. We've been taking about 30 deer per year in a managed hunt with shotgun hunters. So we close the state forest for two or three days every fall, like hundreds out there to reduce the population. We are seeing a return of the vegetation. We are starting to see some regeneration of our oaks and hickories to the point now where we're starting to look at the park and maybe be able to do some management there. Before 2008, we couldn't have done anything because to manage a forest, you have to have little trees.
Right.
So.
I guess, I mean, my, you know, obviously, we want, we'd like to get to the point where we have little trees, you know? I mean, we need to be able to, to do something that's going to be effective.
I think what you're kind of getting at, basically with them hunting their little parcel, how big is the property on you?
We have three properties, each about an acre.
So about three acres.
So it's three acres together?
Three acres in one clump, in one spot, and then you get the sour wood, what about two acres? That's not going to do anything to your population.
Oh, I meant, does it, does it impact their area?
But I think, you know, the point, and that's probably what I was kind of interested in, too, is, you know, how do we, what are the metrics that we would use to say, if we do this, we can expect to see this? And what I'm hearing from the, from Jim.
Yeah.
Is that when you bring down those deer populations, you are seeing in a measurable way.
Yes.
Regeneration of the undergrowth and so that you're getting the desired result.
I worked with Fairfax County Park Authority, we built a deer enclosure, which is a 10-foot-high chain of dunes around a quarter-acre lot at Huntley Meadows Park, and we are starting, I monitor it every two years, and I am starting to see a regrowth of the understory vegetation. It, since somebody else mentioned something about invasive plants, it's still got that challenge.
Yeah.
But I am starting to see now there are some little seedlings out there that are now six years old because that's how long the fence has been there. When I compare it to the control plot right next door, there are no little seedlings there.
All right, thank you. That's.
I have a few questions, but I'll be brief and quick about this. What is the main problem or concern for Reston? Is it the vehicle collisions? Is it the understory?
It's all of the above. I mean, the board, the board has been approached on several occasions and, you know, by members, and their concern as expressed is health, health and safety, lyme disease and so forth, to some degree the deer vehicle collisions, and then the loss of plants, whether it's plants on their individual yards. And I know with Claudia and her staff, it's clearly the plants on the natural areas and that, you know, those areas that were left to be natural areas and, you know, self-sustaining and self-regenerating are considerably less so because of the deer than what they could be, fewer deer.
Okay.
So those, that's how I would characterize the problems.
Unless we, and I'm just playing devil's advocate, that's why I'm asking these questions. I also had the question of what's, what numbers are we looking at? Unless we coordinate something with Fairfax County kind of at the same time, aren't the deer just going to walk back to regional?
There's actually research, because the deer are in these clumps areas, they don't move like gas in a vessel. If you reduce the population in one spot, the deer don't just flow right in. So you can reduce a population, especially in an area the size of Reston is huge for this, and if you reduce the population in Reston, they're not just going to flood in. Now, when you get some deer that, they naturally disperse coming in over time, yes, but it's not, by managing the deer in Reston, you're not going to try and manage all the deer in Fairfax County. They're not just going to flood into the void that is there.
Okay. Some of the numbers of Fairfax County, since we've been doing this since the late 1990s, I think, the objective was to get, you know, a healthy range of 15 to 20 deer per square mile, but you still have 50 deer per square mile. So is this an effective program that's happening in Fairfax County now?
We're seeing a reduction over time, but we're not having the impact that we need to really get it down to a healthy, sustainable level. So it really warrants continued management through the Fairfax County program. And, you know, the lands that are managed by the county are only a small portion of the lands in this area. So it really needs to be a combined effort, not only with public lands, but also private property to really have an impact at the larger scale.
Okay. How much would a?
The survey of multiple parks, the estimate at 47, was, some parks are brand-new into the program this year. Some parks have been into the archery program since 2010. And so you've got this variation in some places, the deer herd is down around 15 to 20 deer per square mile, and other places it's over 100. And it's affected by the characteristics of the park, the size of the park, the hunting and style that's been going on, have they had sharpshooting, have they had managed hunting? Is it archery? So there's all kinds of variation in the, in the data, and then when you average it, you end up with 47.
Okay. All right. And then how much would a formal survey cost? If we asked somebody to say, we need something more than, it's kind of like this. What is, what are we looking at?
Survey of what?
To find out how many deer, you know, per square mile, where are the hotspots? Just to get a little bit more concrete information.
Yep. It's hard to tell a hotspot. Previously hunting in general, you see five or six deer, you shoot one, well, they move on. It just revolves around Reston. Probably a deer has a mile, mile and a half radius, and eventually they'll come back to the same area. So you just, you know, eventually they'll come back, they'll go somewhere else, it just revolves in a big circle. Not necessarily a circle, but they move on, they come back, and move on, come back.
The, to get to cost, you have to start looking at, you know, how much time would it take for Larry and Claudia, and then looking at their salaries, I have no idea what those would be. If you wanted to hire a firm to do it, the one that I'm thinking of, probably around about $30,000. I'd be happy to take your money.
Danielle, if I would make a suggestion for you, why don't you suggest that to the board or to staff to look into?
Okay. All right, thank you.
Just a quick question to follow on with one that was asked, because Catherine, if I remember correctly, you mentioned something about an infrared study that was conducted by Fairfax County.
Yes.
Is, is there a way maybe to get to that answer to see if, if anything was done that kind of centered near or around Reston to see if there was any statistics that came up of that?
I can take a look at that and contact the Fairfax County Park Authority. It's called a deer study, is what was conducted over this past winter. It was conducted by White Buffalo, which are the, it's a company that's conducting the Fairfax City Study as well. We have a contract with them through the county. So I can take a look at the final report that they submitted as well as contacting the park authority to see what the range of cost was in there for conducting the survey at those selected parks, and we might be able to extrapolate something from that.
That would be great.
Or maybe there could be an opportunity for a partnership. Because we have a lot of adjacent land, we took everybody together to get a holistic, more holistic view of the populations and share the responsibility and cost on that.
I think one of my concerns is Lake Fairfax, it's right on Reston's property, and that's, that'd be a huge number of deer there.
Yeah, I guess what I was trying to get at with my questions is how can we provide leadership and be more effective at trying to manage deer in a sustainable way here in Reston? And how do we do that in a way that's physically responsible and maybe show the way for the rest of the state and perhaps other states?
Rachel? Yep?
Yeah, thank you. Those are wonderful and in-depth comments and information. Appreciate that. I work at the USC Logical Survey, and I work with our deer biologists and with the state biologists extensively, and they're about, nationally, internationally, they're about 30,000 studies on the impacts of deer on vegetation, and those relationships are well-known and well-understood. But a question for Claudia and for Jim both, the, one question I have, is, is the seed bank adequate both for trees and for shrubs and forbs? Should you remove the grazing pressure from the deer? Is every, all the parts still there in the seed bank, or do we have to actively manage to bring new plants in?
My experience with the deer exposures is that there is some of the seed bank there. There are some plants growing in those exposures that I had, it took me along to, I'm, I'm better with the woody plants than I am with little green ones.
Yeah.
And there were some that took me a while to figure out what they were. There was one plant that I had never seen before, and it took me about three weeks to finally get an idea on it. It was called lop seed.
Yes.
Actually a fairly rare plant. So there is some seed there, and of course with the trees, yeah, we've got the seed bank because they're still producing seed. The shrubs tend to come back. I am starting to see some of the viburnums and things that I would normally see in that forest within the exposure that I don't see outside of it, so.
The canofin trees are still dropping acorns, there's still seeds, there's still things coming down to regenerate the forest, but I have seen a study about a decline in plants like orchids.
Sure.
Where those are not coming back from areas that have heavy deer browse.
And small trees like pawpaw, which we have rarely in Reston, that would take some active management to get it back in Reston.
Actually, pawpaw is one species that is benefiting from the deer, because that's one thing that the deer will not eat, those trees. They eat the fruit, but they won't eat the trees.
Well, good, that's good news for Reston. Dr. Edwards, you mentioned chronic wasting disease. As far as I know, we've got chronic wasting disease as close as West Virginia, and it's a density-dependent disease. You might just describe it a little bit in regards to the impacts it has on deer health and potentially on human health.
I actually might defer that question to Kevin Rose, since he specializes in that more than I have, and I'm really getting brought up to speed with where everything stands in Virginia and the county at this moment.
We do have chronic wasting disease in Virginia.
Okay.
It spilled over from West Virginia into Shenandoah County. We have a containment area that's over there near Winchester, that's where it is. There's been seven confirmed cases of chronic wasting disease in state. All of it was within a couple miles of each other until last year, we had a case that popped up about 10 miles away from the rest of the clusters. That's concerning. But chronic wasting disease is a transmissible, spongeiform, encephalopathy. Break that down, transmissible, they pass it, you know, they can spread. Spongeiform, creates holes, creates a sponge. Encephalopathy, brain. So it's a transmissible disease in terms of brain into a sponge. It's actually, it's not a virus, it's not a bacteria, it's a prion or creon.
Creon.
Which is basically a deformed protein. It's kind of a scary thing. You can't kill it because it's not really alive. You have to, if you try to incinerate an animal with it, you've got to have a top-notch industrial incinerator, you know, better than most places have, because it'll actually survive the incinerators. In places where they've had it, they've had it in pits, they've actually dug out the dirt, you know, take out all the animals, dug out the dirt, put down, you know, all kinds of treatment to try and kill it, left it there for five years, put a deer back in there, all the deer got, got to die. It's 100% fatal. It is, all diseases that are passed from animal to animal are somewhat density-dependent. Okay? You have 500 animals in a given space, they interact with each other a lot more than if you have 100 animals in a given space. So it's just common sense, the higher the density, the easier it is for these diseases to pass from one to each other. The Department of Game and Inland Fisheries takes chronic wasting disease very seriously. We have a containment area, we're doing everything we can to slow it down. We cannot stop it. It will spread here. But we will do everything we can to make that as far into the future as possible. But there's nothing we can do to stop it. So it's coming.
I just maybe a couple summary comments that might be helpful. That is, is that it appears to be that at least at a regional level, at regional meeting county level, is probably the most effective way to manage that, and we could, we could aid here in Reston by cooperating at that level so that, for example, immediately adjacent parks are part of the, are part of the management strategy. We can probably have an effective deer control program if we work at a regional basis. Secondly, I think we can manage for results. If we see our forestry term measuring the forests would be the strongest and easiest indicator to see that we're controlling deer populations and/or vehicle incidences are another ready measure that people are very aware of. So we can look at those two measures without having maybe the expense of going and looking at actual deer populations. Let's manage deer for the results we're expecting. So, thank you for that very wealthy set of facts and information. Really appreciate it.
Danielle?
Can we go back to Kevin's Armageddon discussion? You're just talking deer, right? Just checking.
Brian Hunter-Preon's, it's Matt Calvinstein's. It's, there is a version of it that is in humans. There's nothing to show that it can be transmitted from deer to humans, but we also can't say it can't be. There is a, no, yep, Jacobs.
Kootschoff-Jacobs.
Yeah. I am not a doctor or a microbiologist, so forgive me if I'm not knowing all of the names. But there is a, a version of transmissible, spongeiform, encephalopathy that humans do have, and chronic wasting disease is not crossing the species barrier from deer to humans yet, but we can guarantee that won't.
Kootschoff-Jackinson Syndrome or Disease?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Well, I brightened up our evening. Thank you all.
That was really great.
And this was in, and I thank Larry and the team for putting this together, but this is a request that came back. This was a request of the board that came in June to get a full summary, understanding of what's going on with deer management and options that are before us. Obviously, we're not ready to make any decisions tonight. We wanted to have the first stop of providing the information, a strategic issue that is of importance to you as to how we deal with this. So it was a lengthy presentation for a reason. We wanted to make sure we got all the information on the table, and I appreciate all the time that Larry and Claudia put into putting this together and to our guests for coming this evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you all for listening. This is by far the best word ever.
Spread the word. Talk to the cameras. Spread that word. Can you look in the camera and say that?
Don't tell the old board that.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah, Jamie can say, we're not finished.
Yes. All right. That's fine. David, give you a moment here while we. You hung in there so far, sir.
I said, I only have about two hours' worth of stuff.
That's fine. As I said, I'm here all night.
Why did you guys put him at the end? He's like the coolest.
Isn't that?
Yep. He's the best.
All right, sir. Thank you for hanging in there with us. Go for it.
Sure. So I'm going to talk about the 2015 budget planning process. Before I get into members and governing documents and things like that, Kate's going to go through how we got to where we are today with the 2014 and 15 biennial budget, and then I'll take it from there.
So I'm the first hour and a half. No, just kidding. One of the things that was very important to David and I is, for those of you who are new, we had four in the room, now we have three in the room. I wanted to very quickly go through what a typical biennial budget process is like, and it's actually spelled out in the Finance Resolution 1, and we have a step-by-step process for every year that we put it together. So what we did last year and 2013 was build the 2014 and 15 budget with the steps that we have listed up here. So the first thing that we do in the presentation or to, to get it together in step one is we get together with the fiscal committee and the board to consider the level and sufficiency of repair and replacement funds. Before the end of this year, you're going to get information from us on our reserve study. So you're, we're kind of prepping you. We're going to set you up for next year as we get ready to develop the 2016, '17 budget for that. Next month, we'll also provide an overview of where we are for 2015 on our capital projects and where we think we're going to be on that. But step two last year is we developed a budget calendar that is presented to you. We put together a member suggestion form that we put out to the community to get information from them. And David and I have got some ideas on some new ways that we can go and do that and get more one-on-one contact with members when we talk. We set some public hearing dates so we get member comments on what's been proposed. We'll have maybe subsequent hearings based on things that we've had and adjustments made. And finally, the budget is approved by the Board of Directors and the assessment rate is set for the first year of the budget. We propose an assessment rate for the second year, but that can't be ratified until when you're in the second year. So right now, we are in the second year of the 2014-2015 biennial budget process. So prior to the second year, we now have this process that we're starting today. So first what we're going to do tonight is review the two-year budgets for the operating fund, repair and, we're going to get to repair and placement capital assets next month. We want to kick off with the operating fund tonight. We're going to present, next step will present proposed revisions. We'll also be prepared to do that this evening, so we're going to hit one and two. And we're also going to propose some public hearing, a public hearing date for you, so we'll hit number three on any revisions that we made to the 2015 budget that you need to know about. You can have work sessions based on what you've heard from us this evening if you choose to hear that. You don't have to make any decisions tonight, but as you come up to the October deadline, if you see anything that you want to have a discussion on in a work session, we can. Any revisions are made by you and approved by the Board of Directors and then again, you will set the assessment rate. So we have a timeline for this. We do need to set the assessment rate before the end of December. Very important. Staff's preference would be in the month of November so that we can do all the prep to get the assessment invoices out, notices of the assessment out prior to the end of the year. I'm going to be quiet now and let David go through what we have done. There have been a lot of changes over the past year and a lot of things to, that we made adjustments to.
Okay. Thank you. So, yeah, we were in major discovery mode with respect to the 2014 budget, less so with 2015. You know, as I normally do, I want to walk you through the process that we went through to review the numbers and come up with any proposed changes, mostly reallocations due to personnel changes and things like that. So one of the biggest pieces we had to do is basically recalculate the 2015 assessment based upon our current property values and future growth. You know, we have an apartment building coming online early in 2015, so we wanted to make sure we captured that in the budget. We also reviewed all of our other program revenue assumptions in detail and adjusted those based on our current expectations. A lot's changed since November of 2013. On the expense side, we forecasted our personnel costs based on current staffing levels, our current benefit costs and any open requisitions that we're aware of now that will be filled during 2015 if not before then. And we looked at every other cost line item as well and just did a sanity check, made sure we didn't need to make any adjustments. So what did we find? Similar to 2014, the 2015 but original budget did not account for the reduced assessment rate for properties that fall below the 2015 property tax value threshold. And it also did not account for tax relief assessment credits. I'm going to touch on those in a little more detail a few slides from now. Also, you know, if you remember the 2014 budget, certain employee benefit and workers' comp insurance costs were too high. That also carried over into the 2015 budget. Now, a little bit of good news. So health insurance premiums will remain flat going into 2015. So Kaiser, Melissa gave me the good news last week that Kaiser is not increasing our insurance premiums. So that's great.
To the benefit of some of the newer directors, I would point out that that first bullet was not a David's making.
Not of that David's making. Not of this David's making.
That's correct.
Correct. Just want to clarify.
That was, that was, that was months before.
It was good that you discovered.
This David's making already. He's just too much of a gentleman to point that out.
He's a professional.
Not his.
It is what it is.
We'll move forward. Our dental insurance premiums will increase by 3.3%. So in the current environment, I think that's very favorable. In the original budget, they were both forecasted to increase 5%. So they're another little piece of some favorable news for us. Something that I think is really important to cover before we get into the nuts and bolts of the numbers is, you know, to review our assessment structure. And this is going to be remedial for some of you, but it's going to be brand-new to others. So on the table, I've got basically the four types of assessments that the association may charge. The first and most obvious is just our general assessment rate. And that's for 2015, the proposed rate is $642 and that rate is approved by the board annually. There's another component of the general rate for properties that fall below a certain threshold in property value. Rather than charge the 642, we'll charge them a half of 1% of their assessed property value per Fairfax County records. The second and third rows, they're somewhat similar and they're related to federally and state subsidized and elderly housing apartment units. And those are charged $10 less than the annual assessment. And historically, as far back as I've seen, units that fall into those categories pay a lower rate by either falling into the property value threshold or the final item, which is the Fairfax County real estate tax reduction or for simplicity's sake, the tax relief rate. And what that's made up, it's been about one-half of the annual assessment rate every year. It hasn't been, well, it was changed in 2014 and it's set to remain the same as proposed. Something that we're going to recommend a bit later in my presentation is that rather than have it as a flat amount, we make that a fixed percentage of the general annual assessment rate going forward. So we don't have to think and, you know, add $5, take away $10. We can have a rational basis for that tax relief assessment amount. Okay, the next slide, a lot of statistics related to our assessment. I think really most notable, if we go down to total billable units, you'll see that overall, we're going to increase by 359 units. The Harrison's coming online early next year. Some of the units are coming online most likely at the very end of this year. They do have 360 apartment units. We have been billing for the one unit for the land, so that's why there's only an increase of 359 billable units.
10% of that building is already rented.
It is. We don't have residency.
No, it's not occupied, but it's, they've got contracts, so, yeah.
Wow. That's great.
Yeah, it is good.
Do they rent that?
Like a thousand.
Okay, so expanding a little bit on the topic, property values. This slide will show that the overall increase in property values based on the Fairfax County records from 2013 to 2014 for all the properties in the community is 10.6%. What I really found to be interesting is showing the overall percentage increase as well as an average increase by segment of property value. Okay? So you can see how that 10.6% is spread across, or maybe you can't see, that's pretty small, is spread across the different segments. But just for an example, the first bar shows that properties valued on the low end of the range from $2,000 to $126,800 experience an average increase of 25.3%. You know, I would imagine most of that's due to Metro coming online.
There's a $2,000 property in Reston.
There is. It's a parcel of land.
Yeah. That's a lot.
So we get our $10 from that.
Set up a $10.
You're trying to.
So, you know, something to keep in mind, overall 10.6% increase, the properties at the lower end of the scale experience some pretty dramatic increases.
How does that compare to the county roughly?
I can't answer that question, but I could find out.
It's just curiosity. Thank you.
David, this material's in the Dropbox?
Yes, sir.
Yep, they will be. Of course Sabrina's been listening to the presentation and I'm, can you get this in Dropbox? It's okay. She's good, she'll get it on.
Okay, so next graph shows the development of our assessment over the past five years with 2015 as proposed. And again, that amount was approved back in November of 2013. And our increase from 2014 to 2015 is 1.3%. So going from $634 to $642, 1.3%. So that's fairly modest when compared to the increase in property tax values.
Just a quick question to the overall board. Is it worth increasing it by $8?
I mean, for every dollar we increase the assessment, it's about.
$21,000, $20,000?
Yeah, 19, because some of those $21,000 are assessed lower than.
That's about $165,000 overall to RA. I'm just throwing it out there.
Yeah, I mean, using 20 as a rough, that's good. So about $160,000.
So an important strategic question.
We can adjust. Sit through the rest of the presentation first.
Okay.
Yeah, please. But that's a question definitely for you all to consider between now and the November desired timeframe.
Okay, sort of the hollow shaded bars next to the blue represents our assessment cap or the maximum amount we're allowed to charge for the assessment each year. So this year, we are $43 or 6% below the assessment cap. Okay, and then finally, I mentioned that the tax relief assessment and then the related credit that goes along with that. So you can see how that's developed over the years. I put the actual assessment amount next to the year beneath the blue bars and then I'm showing how much of that is credited back to the individuals who qualify. It's ranged from just under 52% of the total assessment to almost 57% of the total assessment. So again, it's our recommendation that the board considers at the next meeting, nothing needs to be decided tonight, but something we need to consider is, you know, do we just say, hey, it should always be 55% of the annual assessment or should it be some other measure?
And just a point of information for the, especially the new people, that is discretionary on the part of the board. It's a may, it's not a must.
Correct.
Do we have any idea with regard to that metric on the, the tax relief? What, what we expect that change to be in the future? I mean, because we have an aging population and I don't know if that's, normally will impact incomes and if people's incomes are going to get smaller. Do we have any, any idea about what that looks like?
I think we can take a pretty good educated guess that it's not going to change much because it's, it's a combination of age and income.
Right.
And wealth. So you put those three factors together and so that demographic's not probably coming in.
Yeah, I mean, I estimated a pretty slight increase, about 2.3% in that group.
Okay, that's history or something? All right, okay, I'll support it.
So that was a lot of information fairly quickly. Does anyone have any questions before I move on to our numbers?
Please continue.
Okay. So we'll start with revenue. I mentioned earlier, and this is basically going to show you the change from the original approved budget to where we think we will end up now in 2015. So I talked about the assessments earlier and the first line item will show that, you know, we have an unfavorable change to the original budget of about $283,000 and that's due to the items that we're not accounting for. Recreation services has a fairly small favorable change. It's comprised of ins and outs from a few different areas of, you know, non-resident pool passes will come in much lower than we originally thought and that'll be offset by positive adjustments to resident pool passes and then several other program revenues. Both finance and administration and covenants administration have a favorable change in total of $86,000 if you combine the two. And that's due to collection of prior year revenue items not being accounted for in the budget. And that was something also that we found when we reviewed the 2014 budget, a similar symptom. Parks and facilities has a fairly minor unfavorable change due to about a $3,000 reduction in ball field usage fees. Environmental management and education has a favorable change of right around $11,000 and that's due to, we expect tuition revenues to increase and slightly increased merchandise Investment income is a, is an interesting one. So I talked to Rafa Wealth, the guys at Rafa Wealth Management, they're our money manager. We spoke for a while about predicting the future and crystal balls and things like that. And they said, you know, overall, they would be comfortable with a 6% return in total on the portfolio. You know, we have, we have some fixed income investments, which that's fairly easy to predict, between 1.6 to 2%. Then we have the equity investments that'll throw off dividends, that could be another 1%. And then what's left over is unrealized gains. Who knows what that's going to be? It could, it could be 20% up, it could be 15% down. I guess what I'm saying is, I say 3% overall return for the year. I think it's conservative, but, you know, nobody really knows what the stock market's going to do, so that's one we just have to keep an eye on.
People may not be impressed that our new investment strategy is delivering additional dollar per year.
I want to be optimistic.
Previous years, that variance was a negative 20-something thousand.
Agreed.
26,000. So it is paying off.
Thank you. Well said. Okay, and then other revenues, again, we have a positive variance or a positive change and that's due to merchandise sales and our member services area. On the expense side, so before I get into the numbers, there are two new initiatives which some of you may or may not be aware of that have come up since the original budget was prepared. RA staff requested the board consider adding these two items to the 2015 budget. And when I go through the expenses, those items are included in the expense figures that I'm going to talk to you about. So the first, the first initiative is that we would like to hire a consultant to assist with developing urban design guidelines for the DRB when reviewing mixed-use development and redevelopment. Rough estimate of cost is about $30,000. And the second one is we would like to conduct a parks, recreation and open space survey. And the survey will be conducted in coordination with the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee to provide useful data to the organization to develop the next biennial budget, which is 2016 and 2017, and for use in discussions with developers. And again, we think the cost will be right around $30,000. Given all the ins and outs that we did during the discovery phase on the expense side, we don't think that it will impact the overall proposed budget, rather it's just reallocating costs between areas.
David, when you say overall, you mean, meaning operating.
Surplus from operations.
Operating. Just operating. One of the, and one of the things that. Operating. Just operating. One of the, and one of the things that's important to note is that these two budget items or requests or projects were not originally put on the table in 2013 for the 2014, 15 budget. So, we are required to come and ask for permission to do that. I'll let David continue, but in the numbers that we were able to crunch, we were able to absorb it as proposed in the 2015 budget.
Okay, so, I mentioned employee benefit costs and workers' comp costs being overstated in the original budget. That, that hits every single area that I'm going to talk about, so I'm not going to repeat it each time unless you really want me to. I'll just say that it's due to personnel cost updates, and if there's something else in personnel cost noteworthy, I will mention it. So, Management and Headquarters shows a favorable change of $168,000 due to personnel cost updates, including not hiring an additional resource for the CEO as originally proposed in the 2015 budget.
I just sleep here. It's easier that way.
Recreation Services shows a favorable change of $83,000. And, you know, the primary driver here was the promotion and transfer of the Aquatics Program Manager to Deputy Director for Recreation. And that position is now reflected down in Parks and Rec Admin and Support. Park and Facility Maintenance shows a favorable change of $41,000 due to personnel cost updates, partially offset by higher-than-budgeted vehicle insurance costs. Parks and Rec Admin and Support shows an unfavorable change of $183,000. One of those, one of the big impacts there was the Deputy Director for Recreation position, which is new. A Facilities Monitor position, which is new. And the Recreation and Open Space Survey I mentioned earlier. The full impact of these items were partially offset by the employee benefits and workers' comp costs. Covenant's Administration has a $98,000 favorable change, and that's due to the personnel cost updates. And that's partially offset by the professional services costs related to the Urban Design Guidelines initiative I mentioned. Environmental Management and Education shows an unfavorable variance of $21,000. Most of that is due to inland marine insurance not being accounted for in the original budget. Again, similar to what happened in 2014, and that's offset by personnel cost changes. Any questions on expenses? Okay. So, in summary, after all is said and done and adding those two new initiatives in, our surplus from operations is pretty close to where we thought it was going to be. $4,271 higher. And as we mentioned, we'll provide you with a comprehensive capital expenditures update in the October meeting. So some things to consider, and again, no actions required. October 23rd, which is the regular Board meeting, should have a public hearing to review the formal updated 2015 budget. November 20th, which is the regular Board meeting, would require the approval of $60,000 to fund the two initiatives we discussed. We would also need, or we recommend that you designate and approve a tax relief assessment rate using a fixed percentage of the annual assessment rather than ad hoc increases every couple of years. We're also required to set the annual assessment rate by the end of the year. Recommend that there are no changes to what was originally proposed and that that be approved at the November 20th Board meeting. And then, believe it or not, in January, it's most likely time to start planning for the next biennial budget.
And one of the things with that biennial budget that we're going to come to you in January is, it's time to redo the Association's strategic plan. Typically, wait, we wait until the springtime to do that. I think I want to do that earlier in the year. I think what comes out of that strategic plan development is going to drive how you want to build your budget. And as opposed to being kind of offset, I want to line that up so that you have more of an opportunity to do that. So I'll come back with a proposal in January. The intent tonight was to provide an overview of where we are. I'm required, as you saw in, in step two, to tell you what the changes are in the 2015 proposed budget. Not too much. We were able to realize some cost savings and efficiencies. We found some things that were left out in the planning process last year. We corrected that. And, and we have two projects that we also want to try and achieve. It is up for you all to decide whether or not you want to stay with the proposed amount of 642 as recommended last year. And we can leave it up to you at that point.
Oh, I just, I'm going to comment first. Only, and I don't want to set the tone, but I must say, having been here for the last five and a half years, and many of you are new, that was probably the most elegant presentation of an upcoming budget for Reston Association that I've ever seen. That was very impressive, very succinct, and to the point. And, and I, I know the new members of the Board cannot appreciate that comment very well. And, and if you're still befuddled by the numbers and all that, that's okay. You know, there's a lot that we will be getting into as we get into this. But to end up with this slide very cleanly presented, we've never seen that since I've been here, where we have, I think, a very easy set of items to go through between now and the end of the year. So well done, Dave. And I do applaud staff for sticking to the recommended rate of 642. I commend the staff. That's a rarity as well. So, I commend the new CEO, the new staff members. Job well done, from my perspective. I didn't, don't mean to set the tone, but I wanted to say that.
Come on, set the tone.
I set the tone. Any questions or comments for David? I know it's late, folks, but...
Down the road a little bit, how about doing an annual budget? We're doing a two-year budget. Why not an annual budget?
So that would require a change to our governing documents.
Yeah, but let me just put that out there.
Okay. Got it.
Anybody else?
The assessment level that you're suggesting, does that include a free archery tackle for every member?
As you know, counsel, nothing in life is free.
That's the new merchandise in member services.
But you can, right, but you can buy one from member services.
Danielle, please.
Are we required to give the membership a certain amount of time before rates increase, decrease?
There's a set process for, we, the whole budget process includes a lot of member input as we did last year. We set that, so...
Okay.
This won't be done blindly. This, as we set the tone last year, member input to the budget process was critical. I can't, you know, we set, so they will be involved in this early.
Yep. And as a numbers person, I've done board presentations before. That was really nice and clean and to the point, yep.
We will definitely be doing, I mean, David and I will work with Kirsten, and literally in the next couple of days, there'll be a big push for public hearing information, make sure it's, you know, it's in a, you know, it's in a great format that people can get a quick understanding of. So that's, that's going to be important so that they can come out and have a conversation. You know, you can hear what they have to say about that.
And in our Dropbox is all of the prior efforts. If you want to see just the level of detail that we went through at that time, that's probably a good background. And I can point those out, we can point those out to you that have been around for a while. Yes, sir?
Noting that David does not have a bow and arrow, I'll make this comment. Looking at the numbers, it kind of reminded me again that we might be approaching the time when it makes sense for the Association to accept semi-annual assessment payments. As that number gets larger...
Yeah.
That annual slap on the wrist is a little more painful. Now, that's a lot more effort. Double billing, double accounts receivable processing. But we might be able to find some smarter ways to do it.
Yeah. And counsel's having a hard failure over here, but that's, no, you're okay. We'll have to figure that out.
There's lots of issues there.
Isn't there a process where you can make a four quarterly payments?
An installment plan.
Yeah. I think I've leveraged that at different times in my life.
Yeah, there's a finance charge.
And ultimately, there would be a charge to do that double billing. So it's, it's kind of an equal yet opposite reaction when you do something like that.
But there are some creative ways to do it that would cost us nothing. And that's what we're talking about. I just say, I want the board to be thinking about some of this.
Anybody else?
Good numbers, done good.
Thank you for staying light with us, folks. Yes, appreciate it. All right, thank you.
Thank you, David.
Looking forward to the next iteration.
All right.
Is it done yet?
All right. I think we've gotten through the items, folks. I, I will, I'm sorry, but I am going to make an additional motion now. I move to go into executive session to adjourn, I move to adjourn, excuse me, into executive session to discuss with legal counsel contractual matters related to the July hunting request and the Bachi Court proposal, and to discuss personnel matters, including but not limited to the CEO's performance evaluation. Do I hear a second?
I second.
All those in favor, please signify by stating a aye, please.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Anybody abstaining? All right, folks, let them break down. Do we want to move, or can we stay here? Okay. Yeah, so just leave your stuff here, no...